Thumbs up?
Okay.
I'd like to call the Saline City Council meeting to order if you'd please rise and join us all for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And for those of you in the audience this evening, we welcome you. There are copies of the agenda on the back table along with hearing devices if you require them, and of course, we encourage you to sign up or sign in as well. Members present this evening are council members Gearbaugh, CEO, Rice, Harmout, Mayor Protemdillan, and Mayor Morrow. From city staff, we have city manager Swallow, city clerk Royal, city engineer Humphris, DPW director Hopala, I don't believe the police chief here, and I believe the assistant city manager, deputy city manager may be on her way. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
As submitted.
As submitted, Mayor Protemdillan?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Harmout. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Council member Lesh was gracious enough to email the city clerk and I about a month ago indicating that he would be absent from tonight's meeting, so is there a motion now to excuse Mr. Lesh's absence?
Some.
Oh, boy. Was that Gearbaugh? Or Gearbaugh, I'm gonna let CEO be the second. Sorry, I think everybody spoke at once. Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by CEO to excuse the absence. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We come to the first of two public comments on, in this first public comment period, excuse me, will be limited to agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward to make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested, but of course, not required to state their name and address for the record. Before you begin your comments, please clearly state the specific agenda item you are addressing. Please note the city council does not answer questions during this public comment period. Are there any citizen comments this evening? Come forward, make sure the green light is illuminated at the base of the mic, and you are welcome to adjust the height of the podium if you wish.
Good to go. Good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the dam tonight. Remember Midland where all this dam controversy started with their dam breaks? Well, people have been with us spoken, and they want their lakes back. And they're gonna get them back. They're repairing all their dams. I've got, I've got good news tonight, this will make me damn good news tonight. All four dams from the 2020 break are being repaired. The Sanford Dam is completed and will be refilled by next spring. The Eepil Dam will be completed and refilled by 2027. The two smaller dams, Smallwood Dam and Secor Dam, were repaired through the process of being refilled. So this is a hard cry from a year ago where everything was, the skies falling, knee jerk reactions, and demonizing our dams. People didn't want to do the right thing or fix their infrastructure up there. More good news, as consumers power is selling 11 dams to Confluence Energy. This is the stop of Graves River area in mid Michigan. All 11 dams will be rehabilitated, their generation capacity will be reinstated. This will produce 132 megawatts of power. Put that in perspective, that's equal to 40 large windmills or 1,300 acres of solar panels, both of which do nothing for wildlife or recreation and take a lot of subsidizing to get that to work. They're very inefficient energy producers. Hydro power is a much more efficient green energy producer and creates habitat recreation. Local good news is, you probably know this already, the company has rehabilitated and kept their dam. According to the folks I've talked to on Midland, they have no intention of removing their dams down there. The Saline Dam here is in fair condition with competitive bids could be brought up the park quite easily. And whoever started this notion that it's far less to, it costs more to keep the dam and remove the dam, I just don't believe that that's, I don't believe they have the power to, it would cost many millions to remove this dam, and much of the work's already been done on the Saline Dam. And you go for competitive bids, it could be 200, 300,000 dollars to bring it up. I think that's what we should do. So, oh, and 65% of all Michigan dams wants to build for industry and not use for recreation. So the tide's changing on the attitude toward dams. So we're making this harder than it used to be, Saline. Just spend the money, bring the dam up the park, let's move down already, keep the mill pond and save millions of dollars of restoration. There's a lot of unknowns when destroying that park. Everyone keeps their property values, businesses are not damaged, we keep our gorgeous park, our heritage is not lost, everyone's happy, and we can go on to work on other issues like the rec center, waste treatment plants, Curtis House, whatever. But let's do the right thing and just fix the dam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. We appreciate the comments. Additional citizen comments this evening on agenda items? You will have three minutes.
Thank you. David Rose, 663 Springer Court here in Saline. First thing I want to do is I want to thank council and staff for taking time.
David, would you mind, I'll stop your time for just a sec. Would you pull that microphone just a little bit closer and make sure the green light is illuminated at the base there?
It is on.
Good, okay.
I need to talk louder.
Yeah, just talk a little bit louder, pull it closer. Okay.
Anyway, I wanted to thank council and staff for taking more time to gather more information about the dam, about Mill Pond, its attributes, the concerns, the issues. I had a few random thoughts as I was going through the presentation this evening. The current cost estimates, I believe, probably do not include all the items that are impacted by the dam removal, nor all of the benefits that are incurred by keeping Mill Pond. It's, it's gonna take a lot of time and study to come up with all of those issues. And then, you know, the federal part, the federal grants are being reduced, eliminated to the states. That throws the state into an issue of having to reduce their grants and/or eliminate them. And I have a real concern that if we started down the path of re-eradging the dam and not, perhaps not getting all the grants that are needed to finish that, probably big would be left with a, with a problem. Also, as you all know, when grants are approved, they're not 100%, so the city is still gonna have to put some money into it. And I believe it would make more sense to put that money into repairing the dam than it would be to removing it. Mill Pond is, you know, it's the only place in Saline right now where people can canoe or kayak or fish or operate motorized boats by the kids. And if that goes away, if Mill Pond goes away, then our people have to go down to Midland. We don't want to send our folk down to Midland. Midland's a great community, but we don't need to send our folk down there. I participated in a stream search last week sponsored by the River Rays Watershed Council. Stream search is where they check the quality of insects and macro invertebrates to get an idea of the health of the water that you're discussing. And this one took place at Mill Pond, and they found enough variety of things to say that Mill Pond environment is healthy. Not that we want to swim in it necessarily, because we might even. Also, that's the part that I had was, the presentation talks about creating more park land. I don't know that we need more park land. We have a difficult time funding the proper care of the existing park plans that we have anyway. And so I don't think that that's a benefit. Now, the last page in the slide talked about return on investment, and I was kind of curious how that's gonna be done with any degree of accuracy, because most of the benefits of maintaining Mill Pond are intangible. And I don't know how you assess the tangible value to that with return.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Appreciate your comments this evening. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin. No? Okay.
I'm here for the dam as well. My name's Gordon Peters, 396 Saline River Drive. I've been a resident of Saline for 41 years, and we do live on Mill Pond. There's a lot of unanswered questions about cost. I've done some research, and I found that there's a dam in Ohio that is in the process of removing. The original estimate, not including taking the silt out, was $50 million. Ten years later, that estimate is over $100 million for the silt alone. It's near Akron, Ohio. It's called the Gorge River Dam. So that's along with many other questions about how much is this gonna cost eventually? We don't have accurate numbers about estimates, and we don't have higher bids about repair or even removal. And it's already been a year since we got those numbers. My guess is those numbers aren't worth anything anymore anyway. So I would encourage the city, obviously, to repair the dam just like Dave said. There's a lot more benefit to that. I found out that there's a kayak launching place in the, in the pond, but you can't find it because it hasn't been maintained. So I still think there's a lot of recreational value to that pond if it was more navigable, clean up the debris in it, and move, remove the silt to a degree that it would make it more navigable. And use it as an asset to draw people to Saline. When they come, they would want, have eating and restaurants and other activities that we would, I always hear about driving people to downtown. But that's an asset that we could really, I think, benefit from if we just put a little effort into it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments this evening. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Eric Grossman, also talking about the dam. The major reason for removing the dam given by both the Spicer and the city was that the dam will not meet new regulations coming up in 2026. The spillway wouldn't handle the new capacity requirements. In March, I contacted Eagle to ask them about the first date of the inspection in the 70s, and also what they thought about the impending 2026 regulations. Their statement was that that was a federal regulation that would come down from the feds and be adopted by the state of Michigan, and they view that as highly unlikely to happen. So what I see in tonight's report is that someone seems to kind of want to stack the deck by voluntary, voluntarily adopting a higher standard FEMA that is five times more stringent than the 200-year storm event currently in place by the state. This seems like a tactic to make the dam appear more expensive or undesirable to maintain. The floodgates can drain the Mill Pond like a bathtub, so it's probably not a, a safety issue. Also, adopting this FEMA could affect future land brought into the city and low die if it's considered a flood plain. Another issue is the Eagle is apparently back on the city's back for not maintaining its infrastructure like they did down at the waste treatment plant. And they're talking about the left and right intermediate piers with a focus on the trending pin location and developing a plan for corrective action prior to the 2023 inspection. Well, that never happened, and as far as I know, there is no plan in place yet. And this also was written that five out of the eight other issues mentioned about the dam all say, say this deficiency was also noted in the 2020 inspection report. So here we are five years later, and the main culprit for Eagle has not been addressed. Some of these, but their highest concern has not been. So we don't seem to have, at this point, the right fix at the right time was five years ago. And it seems to me that, like the, the chart I noticed on your, your presentation is a Canadian chart that that particular item is for roads. It's got a 20-year deteriorating curve, and it's really not appropriate chart for a long-term utility like the data.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Appreciate the comments. Additional citizen comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin. Please speak into the mic.
Hi, I'm Erin Weidman, 790 Lampens. So my question is, we have two studies, and one was for $218,000 done in 2021, and they listed the reasons on that study, and then they repeated the study three years later to check and update everything, and suddenly it was 1.5 million to make those updates and rehabilitate the dam so it was up to standards. We didn't really have any restating facts or issues of why that is such a gigantic change. And I didn't see it in the updated document that was just sent out. So, and then the other thing was, if we have something like the rec center that is going to be, well, currently, we're doing a lot of updates and making sure things are functioning at the rec center, and the rec center is tied to the parks, and I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of money going into this from the parks and everything to rehabilitate Mill Pond Park after it, or theoretically, it is removed. That's going to be extremely high tax burden to residents, so do we have a plan to put this over a period of years? Is there going to be any updates to the schedule of when this is all going to go through? Because if it all falls in the same tax year, it's going to be a significant increase. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Any additional citizen comments on any of our agenda items?
Hi, my name is Karen Peters, and I'm here to talk about the dam. I've talked about it before, and you probably all know my position is to save the dam and preserve the Mill Pond as is. One of the things I wanted to talk about tonight, I've been hearing, at least for the last couple of years, about the people that are property stakeholders, and I'm talking about people living on Saline River Drive, people that live in the Whitlock condos, people that live on Pond View, residents in Mill Pond Manor that overlook the pond, that we would be sent letters and our input would be solicited before anything happens. We've had a couple of years, I haven't received a letter, I haven't been invited to give my comments as a property stakeholder, and I'm just really frustrated by this because I, I heard that it was gonna happen and it's not happened. So that's the first thing I wanted to speak about. Meanwhile, there's been presentations to the Rotary Club and other entities, and I don't really understand why that's happening, because the Rotary Club isn't a property stakeholder. They don't have a house that overlooks the pond, and their property value is going to be impacted if my property is no longer watered on. So I would say, stop doing these presentations to these ancillary groups, which I'm interpreting you're trying to build consensus with these groups to remove the dam, and that's not right. Now, I want to talk about some of the things that are gonna be talked about in the presentation, reasons for dam removal. One of the things that's listed is safety, and that's another point of contention, because the dam is listed in fair condition. There's only four categories, and if we would do the repairs in a timely manner, as other people have spoken about, then you can really reduce the, the, um, the safety category. In fact, we could maybe get up to satisfactory. And like Mary said, if we would have gotten on the stick in 2021, we could have gotten all the repairs done for 218,000. Now we're looking at 1.5 million. That's the consequences of kicking the can down the road and putting off these repairs. Now, I know you guys have started to do some of the repairs, the boulders and stuff, but many of the things that were called out in 2021 still haven't been addressed. I see they're on the list to be done, but the sooner the better. Prices aren't gonna go down, inflation tends to go up every year. And tied in with the reasons for dam removal is the liability. Do your repairs in a timely basis, you reduce your liability.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional citizen comments this evening on any agenda items?
Hey, Brett Collingson, 319 North Ann Arbor. My comment is concerning 25-163, the increase of the cost of almost 54K for the installation of the dehumidification unit at the rec center. I would like to urge council to hold off on allocating any more money to the, to rec center repairs or upgrades until there is a plan put in place for the future of the rec center and what, and what that future is gonna look like, especially with the rec center task force recommendation on the horizon. The median annual property tax bill in Saline is currently $5,036 according to ownwell.com. Take that for what it's worth. This increase is equal to property taxes of more than 10 potentially struggling households in Saline, and I believe before we commit any more resources to this project, we should be certain that the future of the rec center is viable. I don't want to see us get into a sucking cost fallacy. I urge you to all use patience and be certain of the rec center's future before allocating any more financial resources to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments this evening on agenda items? Let me defer then to the city clerk. Were there any written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time? Easy. Is there additional public comment? Please, come forward.
Thanks for being here, everybody, and I thank you all. I know it's a big part of your lives to do this, but I'm adamantly against the dam coming down. There's a, there's a photo on my phone here that just really tugs at my heartstrings. It's a friend of mine holding up the winning duck from the Rotary race, and I want to address Mrs. Peters's comment about ancillary. There are very few Rotary members that actually live in the city, so she's got a good point why didn't we have a presentation? It's because we could give some input too, and I, I appreciate that. Rotary is about being fair and honest and what's right, and it is amazing that we've kicked the can down the road about road, or dam maintenance. And I asked, last time I came, months ago, I thought, gosh, October, that's so far away to talk about this again. I asked, what was the cost of the study? Because couldn't we just put that toward fixing? We're doing two studies now. Why don't we just fix it and keep enjoying it? And, and I also suggested a crazy idea, which is let's harvest the seed out of the bottom of that thing and sell it to individuals for the gardens. I buy some, I don't know. I, I just don't want it to be undone and not have this thing. It's a part of our identity. You know Wendy Waller would like it to stay as part of her identity, and please, please don't just do it without a vote from the people also. We've done this before, and I think the people count.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional citizen comments this evening? Last chance to speak to an item that's enumerated on our agenda. You will be given an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak again for three minutes to any issues that you'd like. Very good. Then, again, we appreciate everyone's comments. And clerk Royal, you indicated there were no written comments. Okay. We're gonna proceed to the one and only presentation, which is an update regarding the Saline River Dam engineering and maintenance. City manager Swallow, would you like to begin? Do you have any initial comments before I turn it over to the city engineer and DPW director? And before I yield the floor to you, I'm sure both of you took note, took note of a number of questions and concerns that were raised during the public comment period. Hopefully, those can be addressed. I think the most important, and this would be, this messaging would come from Zach, I think it would be very important to mention the significant and serious work that DPW did this summer to improve the quality of our, of our Mill Pond dam. So I just want to make sure that that's noted during the course of your presentation. Mr. Swallow, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm not with both engineer Humphris and director Hopala, so they, they have the content of the presentation, and I think certainly we open to questions together with them after the presentation.
Very good. And I would, for the public's benefit, remind folks that we are not developing consensus or voting on the issue this evening. It's simply a presentation. It will be revisited again in the coming weeks and months. So with that, I will turn it over to engineer Humphris.
I'm gonna start by saying something personal. I had an accident two weeks ago. I broke my ribs, my nose, and busted my lip open. As you can tell, I have a little residual bruising on my eye, but I just wanted everyone to know if I moved suddenly or if I run out of the room, it's because I have to cough or sneeze. Coughing and sneezing is very painful at this time, so I just, that's the reason I'm disclosing this and to explain the residual bruises on my face. So, that being said, I'm dragging into the dam. We are here to talk about the dam. I do have a couple of slides first about asset management. You have heard me talk many times about implementing the right fix at the right time. This, this, this was brought up in the opening remarks about this, the graph that is shown on this presentation and on this slide, and it's just supposed to be a visual representation. As the older the asset gets, the more expensive it gets to fix. This is specifically for roads, that is correct, and it is from the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card, which Michigan Infrastructure Council uses as their basis for all of their infrastructure asset management training. So that's where this came from, and it, it still applies to the dam or applies to all of our assets, and that the older they get, the, the more it takes to bring them back up to their normal operating position. Overall, what is asset management? It's understanding what we own. Every single asset that we own has capital costs and ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And if you don't understand what those costs are before you invest initially in that capital, that's what asset management is, is understanding all of those costs before you invest money in the assets. That's, and doing the right fix at the right time. I've been here now for almost four years, and we have a lot of stuff, right? We are a small city with lots of assets, and that's what this next slide is about. When it comes to, and we have a lot of old assets. Our water system is over 100 years old. Our dam is over 100 years old. Our waste water treatment plant was, is over 50 years old, in its current state before the rehabilitation. The reason this is important is that we're a small city with very limited resources, and we have taken the time over the last, over the last year or so to actually categorize all of our assets into these three categories: essential, safety, and community enhancement. And I think it is important that council understands every minute in the community enhancement or safety column is money I am not spending in the essential column. Same with DPW staff, same with all those, all the other staff that works on these items. The dam we put into safety only because if it were to fail, it would be a safety issue. US 12 downstream property owners, specifically welders, would be a concern if the dam were to fail. Otherwise, it would probably be in community enhancement. I'm going to go over a few of the history slides. I think people who've listened to me talk on the dam before have probably heard. But when I was preparing this presentation, we have a new city manager, and just getting him up to speed, it made me realize I could probably put together, I'm not kidding, 100 slides on the dam. High level dams are, no two dams are the same, no two trib area is the same, no two dam has the same head or conditions downstream of it. So I've really learned a lot about our dam since we first initiated the study in 2023, and I think I could put, I'm not kidding, 100 slides on the dam. So we tried to, this council meeting is not the appropriate place to have back and forth with the public, so I've tried to condense it down to the most important things for tonight. So we're going to try to go through these next ones somewhat quickly before we turn it over to Zach for what we've done since our last presentation in March. When it comes to history of the dam itself, we've talked a lot about how it was built originally in the 1840s. Now, on this slide, you can see in the bottom right, that's what was put in in the 1840s, was just a water wheel. The river is as it is shown on the topographic map up there. That is a topo map from 1912. That's you can see the river flowing through Milton Park there, and that's how the presumably the river was for thousands of years before the dam was built. In the 1970s, the earth and embankment failed at the dam, and we rebuilt it and added some radial gates on the edges of it. So here are three aerials starting from current 2024. An aerial you can see in 1937, very similar impoundment area, and then the one on the far right is from 1970 during the failure of the dam. You can kind of, you can't, oh, you can't see my, you can kind of see the river coming through here. You can see it very marshy. I'm not doing a great job of it, but following the river down through there, the 1970 photo. Oh, yes, thank you for that. What does our dam consist of? All of the items in pink here were built in the 1930s. This is the interior concrete, the interior pier walls. These are some of the areas of the dam that we are concerned with failure just from the age of the concrete. We have some voids behind these walls, and you can see those walls here on this part here. This is those the walls that were built in the 1930s. After the earth and embankment, which means before 1930, the sides of this were just filled with dirt, and then one day it rained hard enough that it flew around and collapsed, so earth and embankment failure. When we rebuilt the dam, we added these radial gates. These radial gates, I think it's important to note right now, the dam does not provide flood control. The radial gates are raised and have to be operated by DPW staff every time it rains to let the water through. It's a common misconception that dams provide flood control. I don't know the exact stats, but there's something like 80% of the general population think dams provide flood control, but only 8% of dams actually do. Ours does not. Ours does not have any flood control components for it. So these gates are raised to basically allow us to lift them up so water goes underneath them during a storm effect to prevent the water from going around the edges in another embankment failure. The impoundment is a critical part of the dam. This is the what is downstream, so basically the water's coming down. You put the dam and hold the water behind it, create this impoundment that was created in the 1930s by Henry Ford so he could power a turbine at the now Weller site for a mill. And that turbine, all of the components of Weller has since been removed, but the impoundment still is in place because of the dam configuration. You know, I didn't get into, I should go back to this real quick. The mill race is over here, the part of the dam. So this is the part that actually would have fed the turbine that used to be installed here in Weller's building right here. You can see it goes underneath the building and comes through here. So this tail race and mill race is also a part of the dam. Just wanted to go back to that as I'm mentioning. So the impoundment, actually before I get into impoundment, which I also think this is a cool aerial. So in 1975, the city filled in, which is now where the rock is, where the dog park area is here, and you can see this is an aerial that just happened to catch from Michigan State. We went back and saw what aerials we could find, and you can see the river was being diverted while we were doing all this grading at the park in 1975. The impoundment here, you can see the shape of this, this over here on the very left of the screen is what we found when we did a sediment survey in 2023. And it's important as dam owners, this impoundment is something we have to manage, and this material management is one of the most expensive parts of our dam. We have a lot of material built up behind the dam, and whether we remove it or keep it, it's something we have to look at spending money on. And if we don't do something with the material, ultimately it will it will collect and turn into a marsh. We'll no longer have an impoundment, it will become just a mosquito marsh. And it's actually, there's less material to remove with removal than keeping if you were to dredge the whole thing. So just keep in mind that materials management, we've got a lot of material in there. This is two, three, four feet deep of black sediment. My white dog goes in, it comes out black, right? This is just sediment filled in the bottom of the pond. This is a quick repeat slide. I think we hit this in the beginning. Our significance is what the state, and we are one of three, we are the middle one as far as risk, and we are currently in fair condition as far as structural inspections. This, we are regulated. We are under Part 315 for our dam. We have been talking about since 2023 this potential change in regulations. We are finding in just the last few weeks that Eagle is absolutely updating their required flow rates for what we must pass in our spillway. So we will be going through that exercise when we're doing our 2026 inspection this upcoming year. How that actually impacts us is to be determined, but it's something we are planning for because it's coming our way. Our current rehabilitation needs, so it's been brought up the 2021 Structural Inspection Report, which was identify the pier wall needs at a couple hundred thousand dollars. What was not included in that estimate was the cofferdam to do those inspections or to do those repairs, nor was the spillway, reconstruct the spillway to a lower elevation. So the changing regulations require us to pass more water over the spillway. One of the ways we can do that is by lowering the hole impoundment down to create more head over our existing structure. Now, I don't think that would be, that was, that goes directly against some of the recreational value and aspects that we're hearing from the public. They don't want to see that impoundment get smaller, but that is an option for us to do is to actually make the impoundment smaller to bring the spillway down, and that's how we come up with the $1 to $1.5 million in current rehabilitation needs. It includes the pier walls, it includes cofferdams, it includes spillway rehabilitation. It does not include any rehabilitation of the mill race, which also likely will need some rehabilitation. One of the ongoing to-do lists from the original feasibility study was more investigation to the mill race and what it's going to take to actually get that up to par. And so I think that this estimate's likely a little low because it does include those mill races. So I think we're, the $1 to $1.5 million is a fair amount that we need to spend in the near future on the dam, but it's likely to go up once we finish getting our hands around what the mill race needs are. Because we had all these changing regulations, we have an asset that's no longer serving its original purpose, we, and we got some money from the state, it made sense to look at removing that dam. I'm just going to hit on a couple of these real quick. Generally, it's just common knowledge that for the environment of dam removal is a not positive for the environment. It's just general knowledge about dams. And the second is asset management principles. This dam is no longer serving its original purpose, and every minute I spend on the dam or DPW spends on dams, it's a minute we're not spending on another asset the city owns. So we did a feasibility study. That's when the public started becoming aware of this. Even when I, even back in my first comment on live, I think back in 2023, I said this is a slow moving project. We've got five years to make this decision. I think it's smart that we are taking our time and figuring out what it takes to to maintain this asset before we do any reinvestment in it. So we had our first town hall on December 9th of 2024, and a lot of folks that are here tonight were there. Actually, more people were there because the whole room was full than are here tonight. We presented the study to council in March of this year and set up these, this email to receive comments. What have we heard? So this was presented in March, but basically the actual feasibility study, we had 35 individual respondents of about 13 explicitly wanted to keep the dam and 22 explicitly to remove. What else have we heard? The renderings lacked realistic detail, so absolutely the renderings were as part of an engineering study. Engineering was just trying to figure out costs and how much parkland was gained, not actually, you know, looking at the future use of the park, just looking at the costs and the assets, the infrastructure costs. What is it going to take to save the dam? So we're definitely digging more into that. And common misconceptions, future of the park, flood control is one I just want to hit on again, this dam does not provide any flood control. We're upstream on the river raising, water's upstream on the Celine River. We don't have a huge frontier area, but it's very responsive. Anybody who goes to Milton knows that sometimes it's trickling through there, and sometimes it's completely flooded in the floodway on the north part of the park. That will continue to happen, but if the dam were to go away, the, where you see all that water now, we would actually create additional floodway on each side of the river, so it would actually swell up in Milton, which would slightly reduce the flooding downstream in Curtis. Slightly reduce, the average person's not going to notice, it's still going to flood downstream. This is basically an negligible impact on flooding. I think that might be that side, but I feel like I, I think I did hit all of the things I was going to hit on, comments from the public.
All right. So what have we done since March? So again, DPW staff from a maintenance perspective, we have updated the dam level sensor in our camera to actually identify when we need to raise those radial gates on the side. So as Tasha mentioned, we we're always having water come over that spillway, but to actually lift those radial gates, we do monitor the the actual levels that are coming through, lift those gates on the side and allow that water to to pass underneath. So we had to make some updates to that, to that level sensor and camera to better report that to us in a timely manner. We've also removed damaged concrete embankment around both of the radial gates on the sides of the spillway there. And so really, that was just concrete that was poured on top of, on top of the ground there. It wasn't really adhered or anchored to anything. And so as you can see in the image to the bottom right there, that is the concrete actually pulling away from that earth and embankment and creating a void underneath that earth and embankment. So we removed that that rubble, basically, packed that in with geotextile fabric, placed 21 AA stone inside of it, wrapped that together, and then put our large sand or riprap on top to really secure that earth and embankment so we don't have a failure where it actually undermines rather than the water overtaking it above. We've also been routinely cleaning the grate that is actually at the most northern point of the mill race in the pond that that constantly collects debris and other other impediments for the the water flow there through the mill race. And then, as you can see in our in our middle image there on the left, always trying to be cognizant of of large tree branches that are constantly getting hung up on the dam. Today even, I saw that there is one out there. So that is, that's something that we're always monitoring. And then from an administrative standpoint, we're in the preliminary development of a new corrective action plan response to Eagle. So as referenced earlier tonight, we did have numerous items that were requested from Eagle for the city to follow up on, all of which have been responded to except for that the concrete of the intermediate piers and those retaining walls as those are deteriorating. But again, that was, that was identified as a much larger repair that was not in immediate disarray and was not going to immediately fail, and that is why a corrective action plan on how we, how we intended to either remove and replace those walls, patch them, whatever the case may be. That is what we're looking at right now as a corrective action plan for that most critical item. Again, we've also developed required maintenance task lists as the DPW fully inherited this back in really December, the month before I started. So now we are, we are ensuring that we actually have routine maintenance tasks, whether that's on a monthly basis, quarterly, annually, having all of that actually documented, which we did not in the past. Designed hoist mount improvements, the actual hoist that operates those spillways, that plate that is anchored into the concrete pier wall there in the middle is actually pulling away from that concrete, and I'll be able to show that in an image here shortly. Additional research on funding options, whether that be removal or repairs, April 15th. Meeting presentation to the youth council on July 5th, handout for dam misconceptions just to provide factual data, and then we've also now generated some updated renderings after request from the community. So these are some of those renderings, right? So we've, we've mentioned that this would actually be what we we believe would closely resemble the actual Celine River, the impoundment if the dam were to be removed. And so in the yellow there, we actually show the additional parkland, usable parkland that would be gained, and then in that green in between the actual river there and that that yellow would be that natural overflow basin. So again, our existing view up to the, up to the left there, if you're looking from actual Celine River Drive, but obviously from an aerial view, this is what Celine River looks like down to the impoundment. Again, this is just a conceptual rendering, just kind of showing that that river narrowing up there, some more natural features right on the side, and then the Celine River Valley Trail Extension that will be getting constructed in the summer of 2026 along to the east bank there. Again, this is our existing view from US 12. This rendering really goes to show that that additional usable park space that would be gained. So you're, you're looking at about four acres or three football fields to the west and six acres or roughly four football fields worth of usable land to the east. And again, you're, you're going to look at about a 50-foot wide river flowing through there with another 180-foot wide embankment for major rain events for that to kind of flood, but still have a natural vegetation on those banks there. Again, another rendering there, this is just kind of showing some aesthetic potential features, right? So we're showing a potential trail system that could potentially connect Milton to Curtis underneath the, underneath US 12 there, which could also additionally help kind of connect the west side of town to the east there and some naturalized planting areas. So we wanted to kind of show some examples of other dams that have been removed and what is, what is quickly followed suit. So this is the Brown Bridge Dam removal up by Traverse City, and so in October 2011, this is what their impoundment looked like prior to the dam being removed. One year later, that construction began in October 2012, and that image there in September 2013 is the actual restoration after that dam had been removed. So you can kind of see that natural vegetation already starting to take place. Again, another Saban Dam removal also up by Traverse City. To the left there, you can kind of see the impoundment right, right in the center of that image. Again, May 2018 was prior to that dam being removed, and then a year and a half later in October 29th, you can kind of see that the river found its its natural path there in its natural shape, and you can quickly see that the green vegetation that's already taking to the sides there. So what we plan to do in 2026, again, from a maintenance perspective, that dam place plate keeps me up at night, so as you can see, it's starting to pull away from that concrete, so we need to put some new plates underneath that and resecure it with epoxy anchors. Again, we actually started today doing further exploration of the mill race inlet structure and actually dredging that out because of the sediment buildup and looking at potential repairs and or replacement of those stop logs, something that has not been done in 15-plus years. Again, and from an administrative standpoint, we want to host a workshop on dam through the river and have a public meeting March 9th, 2026, submit our corrective action plan to Eagle, like I referenced, especially for those intermediate pier walls. We again have received those revised flow rates, the Atlas 14, I believe, and that is what Eagle is actually looking at when processing permits. So it's not an actual regulation that has been adopted by the state, but it is something that they are using as a metric when reviewing permits. Again, updating our emergency action plan, specifically our emergency action plan in cold weather operations, and then ensuring that we have our triannual safety inspection in 2026. And then lastly there, the, the larger effort is determining that return on our investment for either rehabilitation or removal of the dam. So from a communication standpoint, please, we urge you to visit our ClearGov project page for for details. We'll continue to update this page with future council and town hall meetings. If you sign up, you will be notified whenever we make updates to that page. And again, our feasibility study is posted under supporting materials, and any, any further information or comments you'd like to add, please email us at dam@celineamai.gov. So our next steps, like I mentioned, And again, our feasibility studies posted, posted under supporting materials. And any, any further information or comments you'd like to add, please email us at dam@celine.com. So our next steps, like I mentioned, the big, the big hall there is completing that ROI before capital reinvestment, again, whether that be rehab or replacement. This winter, having our workshop on dam impacts to the Seline River. And then again, in March, on March 9th, having a, a new town hall to provide all this information to the general public and receive feedback. So with that, thank you.
Thank you both. Seemias Deswal, is there any additional comment you'd care to make at this time?
I just appreciate the intensive work that Engineer Humphries and Director Hopla have done over the last number of months before my arrival. And again, learning a lot more about this, certainly there's yet, yet a lot of information to be gained from further investigation of the dam. Appreciate council's support for the Spicer contract to help, help investigate that. And as, as mentioned, we want to come back with information for the public before presenting council with a final recommendation and asking for a decision.
Appreciate that. Before we open it up for questions from the dais, one point of clarification, you and I spoke about this issue probably two weeks ago. And you mentioned doing a, a town hall or a, a public forum on this issue. Is, I believe Mr. Hopla indicated on his last slide, another meeting in the winter of 2026. Is that, is that, is that in addition to what you and I spoke about or is that what we spoke about?
So there are two things. There's a lot of information out there about, you know, kind of dam removal versus, you know, rehab dam, what the ecological impacts are, things of nature, that nature. So the thought was to bring in some experts on river systems, on dams, on, you know, what, what the impacts are before and after removal in some cases. And really just to have more of an educational workshop and then on March, really have a more formal recommendation, or at least a draft recommendation, excuse me, than to present to the public before, for discussion and feedback before it would go to city council.
Very good. Per comment made, or excuse me, per statement made during the public comment period, at a minimum for that second event you just articulated, I do think it would be indicative of, of a best practice to provide a direct communication to every adjacent property owner. And by direct communication, I mean a, a first class, a, a letter put into first-class mail. So that would include all, all businesses and property owners. But I think when we get close to a point of making a recommendation prior to it going to council, I think having a, a, a more casual exchange of ideas, questions and concerns would be beneficial. And in addition to our, you know, our, our normal practice of putting something on our website and disseminating a press release, I think a direct mail would be, would be advantageous. This evening, we're going to start with questions to my immediate left. I'll start with Mr. Gearbaugh, work my way to the end of the dais, then jump back to CEO and Mayor Protem Dillon. And then if I have some questions that have yet to be addressed or asked by my colleagues, I will ask them. So Mr. Gearbaugh, any questions for Engineer Humphries, DPW Director Hopla, or the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of my questions are going to focus on what we've been doing in terms of assessing over the last five years. How many studies have we done in the last five years? Two? Three? And how many hours have we put in in staff time just to evaluate the removal of this dam?
So I'm going to say that the Spicer was first hired in 2021 for a safety inspection. The last safety inspection we did before that was probably 2011. And before that, maybe, I think maybe '08 and maybe late '90s. So we're supposed to do a safety inspection every three years. So Spicer was hired in 2020. My recommendation from that was to do a structural inspection, which they did in 2021. I believe they put together a $1,000 correspondence, like a small correspondence for a, a meeting in September of '21. These are all before I started, so I'm, I'm guessing. I think that's it besides dam removal.
Because I know at that time we were, I believe we had something come in because we had a big concern because of the Midland Dam and whatever, and was assessing that. And so when I look at it now, that $200,000 of 2020 and the 1.5 seems to be a bigger scope than what was done and requested at that time. Am I correct in stating that?
Yes, that is correct. So that was actually '21, so the 2021 was a structural report that had the $200,000 and did not include the copper dam nor the, the spillway improvements. It was only the structural pier wall, that's it.
So then, and then we look at this, and as you've mentioned, you know, we have a lot of assets and things we have to address and such. I feel like we put a lot of time into this proposal right now, looking at removal of the dam. And when we had this last meeting, part of the request that we had asked was, what are available funding? What is there to repair if we could do? We wanted two alternatives. I knew that's what I wanted, was to see and evaluate that so that if we wanted to take something. Do you feel we have those two alternatives right now to evaluate or do we have more work to do?
I think we, we, that's why we're suggesting March, as we absolutely have more work to do, to fully evaluate what it takes to rehabilitate the dam.
Okay. Because I understand that the grant we had was used, $200,000 was needed to be done to evaluate removal of the dam. Couldn't be spent any other way. We had to evaluate that. But we have our own other resources that we could have put towards this to evaluate. I guess what I'm looking at this thing too is that when, Mr. Hopla, you mentioned staying up at night?
Yeah.
You've mentioned a similar type of statement in one of our asset managements about in the next five years. I agree with our comments that have been made tonight. We have been putting things off and have been putting them off because council hasn't made a decision based on what really truly needs to be done. What is your feeling right now? Because at one point we were told this repair was going to maybe last five years. And then a meeting three or four weeks ago, that was not necessarily the feeling. I look at this, I'm trying to understand where are we and do we need to move up the timeline? What is the timeline?
Yeah, so I guess my first question back to you would be which, which particular repair are we talking about? The interior, the wall or the, the actual plate for the dam hoist?
Well, you've mentioned both of them. The riprap we just did saying, is that a five-year patch?
That one, that one honestly is the best we can do without actually going to Eagle with a permit and having copper dams put in place. So again, to, for simple layman terms, we packed a void with rock and rip, and, and geotextile fabric, right? We packed that cavity to make sure it doesn't undermine. Could that last five more years? Sure. Could it last six more months and we have a, a major rain event and it, and it washes that away? That could also happen. Again, there's, there were, part of what Eagle requested was major earthen embankment improvements around the entire impoundment there. And we only secured what was just around both of those radial gates. Again, those don't, those didn't have additional pier, like additional wing walls. So now we've created, it created a vortex situation on the outside of those radial gates. So again, that one, we, we got to immediately once we started to see that. Again, for the, the hoist and that plate coming off the concrete, absolutely, we're, we're working on, on repairing that immediately. That one is, is impending and actually pulling away from the concrete.
That is a regard, this, we need to do that, we will do that.
Yes. The actual pier walls, the intermediate pier walls themselves are not, that is not something that keeps me up at night. That is not something that is going to fail or collapse overnight. But we are seeing that rapid degradation on those walls. You're starting to see that, I know when they did structural tests and started hammering on those, you can hear the voids behind that concrete. So there's definite improvements that need to be made on that, along with the actual radio arms that operate the spillways. Those have started to, the pins in them, in the mechanisms are starting to seize up. And so there could be a point in time where those don't operate the greatest, right? So when we actually opened that entire spillway, I believe that was a year and a half ago, a year ago? Oh, 2021, sorry. When we actually opened the entire spillway to do our, our full inspection, that took about a day and a half to eight of my men to open that gate, right? It's not, not some easy task. It's not operating in a, in a fluid motion. We don't have the hives motorized like many of our neighbors have as well. So there are, again, improvements that could be definitely made and invested into, but though, that's just speaking about the, the spillway there.
Okay. And I guess for me, and it's this timeline we're talking about, so no matter which we're doing, removal is not next week. Fixing is not next week, but we need to do these things that I think are going to have to happen. So you've given me some assurance on that, but I think this council needs to find out the timeline for that. And actually, even these other scenarios mentioning about the silt and everything else, what period of time are we talking? Are we talking five years, 20 years, whatever? Those are the things that, if these are maintenance issues and whatever. I am disappointed that we as a city were not maintaining it, but I think there were issues. The statement made that we haven't maintained things for hundreds of years, I think is a little overplay. We have put a significant amount of investment into our sewers and water lines. There's a lot of things that we're doing, but the dam was one thing that I know that we haven't put the money into it because everybody felt it was not falling apart. Then lastly, the only other question I think I have was, we've had three experts looking at this dam. You've had Eagle, you've had all our consultants, and we've had our staff. Who's telling the right story?
Yeah, so I guess, an open-ended question, right? And so again, that you've got, you've got three different nuances there, right? You've got, every time we submit an inspection report to Eagle, right, they're going to have what they're mandated to report back to us, right? From the staff standpoint of us actually operating it, actually using it every single day, right? We kind of understand what needs to be done and what improvements we'd like to see. And then there's what we've then asked of our consultant to either fit budgetary constraints, right? Especially with the removal and the feasibility study, like we mentioned, right? That was grant money just to look at for removal. Or when they did their first inspection, that was just to meet our tri-annual inspection requirements. And then once Eagle came back with their corrective action plan request, that's when we reengage with our consultant on improvements, which a list of them have been made, right? So there's, there's always that back and forth where you've got Eagle trying to administer their ever-changing regulations, again, with them looking at Atlas 14 for their new rainfall data from the permitting side of things. That's an ever-changing regulation that we're trying to be cognizant and proactive of as well as our consultants. And then trying to gauge what's in our immediate best interest. So again, always communicating with Spicer on, on what rehabilitation and repairs we're constantly getting to make, right? So we're out there at the mill race today dredging that out of, of silt and sediment and debris and, and checking on the stop logs that maintain the water level there. Again, that dam hoist, that has to be repaired regardless of if we're going to remove or replace the dam. So there's constant time spent on this dam in the mill race, whether we're going to keep it or not.
I appreciate you making these a priority and addressing these. I think we need to do address them now, we know it, but this is kind of been our thing about risk management, everything is trying to make sure that this happens. With that, I will pass to my colleague.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Councilmember Rice, questions for DPW Director, City Engineer, or City Manager?
My colleague got the answers to most of my questions, but the, the one thing that I do want to highlight is the new efforts that you all are putting into this. You know, we understand as council members that this has kind of been a long time coming. But when you really look at it on paper, you all have made strides over the last couple of years that we probably should have made over the last 15 years. So I understand the, the community's and our frustration in this, right? It's inevitable. But with that said, I'm looking at your timeline, it makes sense. What will the public be presented with is, I guess, my only question. You say determine ROI for rehabilitation or removal. Are you going to give the exact cost? Are you going to get bids? Are you going to do estimates? Who are you going to get this information from? Are we going to have an economist look at this and take a peek in, you know, our actual return on investment?
My intent with a return on investment is to work with engineers and people to find various improvements that are needed for either, so let's say rehabilitation of the dam. Not only the repairs we just talked about with the spillway, we've started to talk a little bit about the repairs with the mill race, but also actually putting dollars to that lifting of the gates every five years. As I just said, that takes ADPW guys, we think that costs about $10,000 every five years. How much does it cost every five years to do the, this report? Look at every single thing that goes into maintaining the dam and assigning a cost for that and determining when the break-even point, that's what I view as a return on investment. That's not an easy thing to do though. It's, it's actually, like dredging is a big component. So if we want to go dredge that whole pond right now, that's more money than I quoted you to remove the dam, right? So that's a decision we as a city would have to make. At a minimum, we have to dredge, for instance, around the mill race to get to the mill race to maintain it or around the spillway. So there, so how we're actually going to fish all of that out to show it in a concise manner, I'm, I'm not honestly positive yet. I'm envisioning though there'll be some sort of range, like we could do the minimum dredging or the maximum, so there'll be a range for that. Because materials management is a big part of our costs. And, and until some decisions are made on what we actually want to do with those materials. So that's, that's one example of why it's a difficult to, to pursue. The second is that we still are evaluating the mill race and if it can be kept in operation or not. That's, that's super important for the downstream tail race, to figure out exactly how much water can be diverted or if any can be diverted in the future. That's, I mean, downstream crocodiles, that's a huge concern to them. And we rightfully should know the answer to that before we move forward with anything. So that is still something we also are investigating and depending on the results of that investigation will impact this return on investment. So the goal is to have a comprehensive list of all of these things that are needed to rehabilitate. This needs to occur every year, this needs to occur every five years, every 10, whatever it may be. We know in 20 years, we have to replace this, so this is a capital cost of that and that this is how much it will cost to keep this dam over the next 30 years. That is our intent.
That was going to be my next question, is how far are we looking into this? Because one of the things that I want, you know, the community keeps bringing up the recreation center, which we are also dealing with simultaneously, right? We got ourselves into the position we're in with the recreation center by not doing that due diligence 30 years ago. So what I would like to look at as a city counselor, as we're doing with the rec center, is what, you know, what are we looking at now? What are we looking at in the future? Because I don't want this to be a tax burden well into the future. So what do those two things look like? Because what I can't see as a city counselor is this community asset, which is an asset to the community either way. It's either, you know, beautiful Mill Pond or we have to take out the dam and it becomes beautiful parkway and we put in effort to create new assets in the park. What I don't want it to be is a tax burden on anyone. So I think over the next few months, you know, thoroughly engaging with the financial end of this, if we have to get in another expert who has the financial acumen, who has gone through this process, if we need to talk to other cities who have gone through this process, you know, we've got, you all have the engineering expertise. I think you guys probably could build this in your head. We need to look at the financial expertise behind this because the guessing and the like, well, it could be, and well, that's not going to satisfy the community if we go off of that. So that would be my, my ask, is that we make sure that we have those finances tightened before we present this to the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Harmoog, any questions for staff?
Yes. So thank you again for all the work you've put into this. I also would like to understand the economics and, and again, over a certain amount of time, I think like 10 years. And I want to make sure that we're considering, because we're talking about what it takes to maintain the dam, but also if we were to remove the dam, there's going to be the maintenance of that new area, the new space, the new park. If there's a, if there's a walkway and it, it floods or it gets, gets like overflow, there's going to need to be maintenance on that, that trailway. So I think all of those costs need to be considered and I, I will feel a lot more comfortable when I see a full, same economics side by side for the, the remove versus keep in over 10 years, not just the upfront cost, but the maintenance for both ways.
I do want to just reiterate, for the ROI on the maintenance costs, those may, may need to be, right? Because we truly don't know what that would look like. We've, we put on in the conceptual renderings that there could, for, for removal, that there could be a naturalized plantings area, right? That does not need to be maintained. There could be an additional pathway that goes under 12 that could be maintained, right? There's a lot of different nuances that I don't know, we could go in a lot of different tangents, right? And so trying to, to spend all of that time on all the potential maintenance of, for all of those different options, right? Like there's, there's a lot of ideas that could be thrown around in that space. We're, we're definitely going to make an attempt to, to address all of that, but to nail down a cost for the maintenance of, well, we may install this or we may install that is where things may get difficult.
I just want to clarify, I'm not talking about enhancements, I'm talking about the, you know, the base level. You know, if you remove it to make it so that it's habitable, that it's palpable to the people around it, there's a, there's a minimum of that. And then I, I know that there's a value for this, this Mill Pond, but I'm not sure it's the value that's been stated because you, you can't fish, you can't swim, you can't have boats on it currently. But if we moved into a more recreational, is there maybe money that can be made that way and is that being considered as well? So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harmoog. Councilmember CEO, questions, comments for city staff?
A couple of questions first, probably for the city engineer. Tasha, this page, it's entitled Components of the Dam Emboundment. Feshah, this page, it's entitled Components of the Dam Impoundment. It shows the varying colors for the depths.
Yes.
Just, so I understand perfectly, those depths are the depths of the sediment, not the depths of the water at that point.
That is correct. Those are the depths of the sediment.
So that's what would potentially have to be dredged in either case?
In either case, if you're saying removal versus keeping the dam, yes, material management has to occur, but the amount of material that has to come out for removal, for instance, you can see that spot, that, how it goes down the middle here, like this is just down the middle of the park. But if we only have 180 feet we need to remove towards the south end, the impoundment's much larger than 180 feet on the south end. So if we were to remove the dam, the material removal is actually less, because we only have to cut a swath through the middle of the impoundment. A lot of that material can remain on-site and become natural, pretty flower areas on the side. If we keep the dam and we decide we want to dredge the entire impoundment, that would then quadruple the amount of, I don't have, I don't know, I'm guessing, that would increase the amount of sediment that needs to be removed.
Okay. Now, we go back to the conceptual renderings of what the river course might look like if the dam were removed. Would there have to be any re-grading there to, to create more of an embankment to contain the flooding area?
So that actually is a good point. I guess I'm gonna do two things on the embankment, I'm gonna come back to this slide, but first, I'm gonna go to this slide. You can see now how there is an embankment when you're looking at, you know, from US 12 and it's going, and now that, right there, that's an 11-foot drop. You know, the dam right now goes down 11 feet to go underneath US 12, and you can see a lot of that embankment in the proposed rendering is getting cut off and seeing, you know, leveled out a few along that area. Going back to this slide, this slide shows, this is where the dam is at, is right here, and this light blue line is the current impoundment level.
Right.
And then this would be the river after, one, you know, the version of the river that we currently have modeled, after dam removal. So that is the changing grade that you would see, basically coming down of the park. So yes, you would have some grade changes throughout the park. I guess I fully answered your question.
Well, that, that floodplain is actually natural existing under there. So that actual green space that you see in between the additional parkland gain, parkland gained there and the Saline River, that is actually currently existing. That is a, a natural floodplain that would not require grading after the fact.
You wouldn't have to have any grading done to separate the yellow area from the green area?
No, correct. That is, that is an existing underlying feature that, again, had been there for, for many of years before the dam was created.
Okay. Now, the embankment on the north side of US 12, that goes down almost like a swale and then comes back up again, does it not, to the impoundment? Or no?
It's, it's definitely, they pounded up all the way around the impound, yes. And you're right, there's a ditch between the sidewalk and the, yes.
So would there have to be any grading done there?
Yeah, in fact, that's where I think the, most of the change would be in the grading, because not only we would want to take a path underneath 12 to get to Curtis Park, so now that is probably above US 12, and we would take that all the way down to 11 feet below. So that's where you absolutely would see a, a big change, which is, trying to, in these two views, I guess it's a little bit better seeing the look from this view.
Right. Okay. I guess I just wanna say this, in, in response to some of the critiques I've heard, not only from my colleagues, but from, from some of the citizens as well. I first came to work for the city of Saline in 1999 as the deputy chief of police. Before that, I worked for the city of Ann Arbor in city government there for 26 years. Our role in working in city government was always, never did we reach the end of the fiscal year where we say, oh gee, we have $15 million left over in the bank account, how best can we serve the community by spending that money? Never, never, never. We've always said, how are we gonna get by with the money we have? So we've always looked probably at the most pressing needs to take care of those. So it wasn't that we consciously made a decision to kick the can down the road on a lot of these items, it's just that there were more pressing items that came up in the interim, I think, that required our immediate attention. So I think in some ways, it's a little bit unfair to say we've kicked this can down the road. I think what happens is this has now risen to the point of requiring our attention. So now we're, we're spending a time, an effort, the, the money that it costs to have the hours spent by our staff and, and the consultants that we hire to look at these issues. So I just wanna make that point clear to everybody, that it's not, I don't think government in the past has not done their job. I think it's, that they've done the best job they have with limited resources, and we need to keep that in mind. And that, that's my only comment. So with that, I'll yield the floor, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Seo, appreciate your comments. Mayor Protem Dillon, any questions or comments for staff?
Thank you. A lot of my questions and have been asked, that's sort of the perk of going at the end. You know, for me, there's, there's three basic buckets. One is safety, one is timing, and one is our long-term plan and vision. And I don't think we can look at any of those in a silo. And so I wanna make sure that that's what we're doing right now, is safety first and foremost. I mean, I feel like even if we decided tonight to remove the dam, it would take to get permits and everything, you're talking several years before that dam could be removed. So we have an obligation to our community to maintain a safe dam. So I think that the whole concept of repairs is not what if, how, it's, we are doing this and what the timeframe looks like to do those. And so, I mean, for me, that's what it is. And then as far as timing goes, there's a lot of different pieces. It's great when we look at these, and I know you had some slides that said, oh, in approximately, you know, two years, they had some green grass growing. I mean, I think that in a previous presentation, we've talked about, it's gonna take two years to die off the vegetation and the wildlife that lives in there, and there's going to be muck and stink and things like that before it sort of regrows. So I wanna kind of understand and be realistic when we talk about what that's going to look like as a timing.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I know we had, had a member of the public even mention that they would be willing to, to buy that peat because of how fertile that is, right? That, that floodplain that would actually be exposed when that impoundment were to decrease if it, if it were, right? That would, that would take the vegetation extremely quickly. Now, is that gonna happen overnight? Absolutely not, right? You're gonna have, you're gonna have that, that buildup of that peat in that floodplain, it's gonna take a little while. It's not gonna be something where we, if, again, if that were to be done in that impoundment to decrease and us to dredge out the silt reclaimed, yes, you would have some of that, that peat and stink residual along the banks there. And part of those efforts wouldn't be to immediately remove that and put down grass seed or sod or anything like that. So yes, there would be a gradual time, but I, I do believe that it's not something that's gonna sit there for five years and be this, this muck in this beautiful area that we have, right? It would take the vegetation rather quickly.
I guess I'd like to add to that. I, I know there were a lot of people here who were, when the dam actually failed in the 1970s. And at that time, we were not trying to turn it into a reverber, we were trying to restore the dam. So I think some folks who were around then probably remember a very, have negative memories, and I'm, I'm sure it took many years of looking, kinda like the picture on the left, before it was, the dam was reinstated. So I agree with everything that Director Hopple just said. This is, this is actually, the dam was removed in October of 2012, and that was, it's a less than a year later, is the picture on the right. This, the green grass, the, it tends to come back very quickly, but you're absolutely right, no matter what, there's going to be probably two seasons of construction. I mean, it takes a minute to drain the impoundment and then another, you know, another construction season to do the actual construction.
So the other things that I wanted to talk about was, and I'm gonna be very specific about this, we keep talking about this pathway under US 12. I think that was talked about 10 years ago when I first, you know, came around to council. Oh, we can do this, the kayakers, they don't have to get out of the water, this is the safe way to travel. So that, well, you're not gonna be utilizing the water, so I don't know why we would be looking at creating something underground when we could across US 12 put in some sort of HOCC system. Because you're not utilizing a body of water to get to, from point A to point B, from Mill Pond to Curtis. And so I guess I'm just, I wanna make sure that we're focused on what we need to be focused on.
Okay, and I guess I'm, to get to the root of your, so first, my first thought on your question is that the intention of going under 12 is to use the existing bridge under 12 to create a safe pedestrian crossing, to build a sidewalk similar to what is in Dundee to safely cross between Curtis and Mill Pond parks underneath US 12 with the existing bridge structure that is there. The HOCC structure above US 12, I have not worked on that since I've been here, but my understanding is that it's something we did try to get over years and years, and even with the US 12 improvements. And MDOT, if that's an MDOT road, that's not our road, MDOT will not permit us to cross above grade because there's not enough documented crossings there, and plus they have a safe crossing up the mills. So the, the chances of MDOT giving us an above-grade crossing there, I, I guess are slim to none.
I appreciate you saying that, and we, we make general statements like that all of the time. And so we talked about that with, you know, speed limits on Michigan Avenue, we've talked about that with other things about it. So I, I would like to make sure that those things are fully vetted and, because one of the other things that we're not talking about right now is any growth to the city is gonna happen to the west. We really can't have a one-lane bridge, you know, one lane each way, kind of doing something. We really need to look at what is the vision of how to get people from the west side east, or east to west in that area. And, you know, whether it is carving into the hillside of the Legion to widen that area and trying to figure out what can be done. But I want it to be, as we're looking at this, to be a very comprehensive, long-term plan, and not something that we're piecing together. And so I know that when we kind of initially met, we talked about, you know, what would that look like for the road? Does it impact the road removing the dam? And I think those conversations said, no, that it was done from the inside. Well, that's great, but again, I think that we have a lot of bigger issues that we need to look at holistically in that area. And that if we're going to do something, we need to make sure it encompasses everything moving forward. And then the other last thing that I wanna talk about was that you made a comment that said every minute spent on the dam is a minute not spent on other assets. And I understand that, but I mean, we could say that about every single asset that we have.
We have too many, we have access.
And so I guess my question is, at this point, should the city be exploring outsourcing the maintenance and repair of the dam to where it's not a DPW job? And is that something that we should be factoring in? Like does our, is there a certain, you know, knowledge base and certification requirements that we would be better off utilizing somebody from the outside versus our staff? Is it the best thing to have eight people turning a crank or to have how many staff members dredging the mill race? I, I don't know, and I guess when we start looking holistically at, you know, return on investment, I think that should be part of the conversation.
Anything else, Mayor Protem Dillon?
No, I'll stop there, thank you.
Very good. Well, I wanna thank you both for the, the presentation and the analysis this evening. I, I do wanna go back to the former point that Mayor Protem Dillon made, which is, I'm just speaking for myself here, but regardless of what the consensus is on the future of the Mill Pond Dam in the next three to six months, we ought to be prioritizing that routine maintenance. So if there are things that keep you up, up at night, and they can be dealt with in a, in a, an expedited manner at a, at a nominal cost, I would rely on your judgment, but if there are matters that, that council needs to act on, I would, I would strongly encourage you to communicate those to the city manager so we can get them on a, a council agenda. I don't have any questions, my colleagues asked a, a number of insightful and probing questions. I do have more of a comment for the city manager, and if he wanted to report back at a subsequent meeting, that would be fine. I think the inference was made by Councilmember Girba, maybe a few others, that this process has been dragging on a little bit, and I, I concur with that. And I, I don't mean to articulate that in a pejorative way, because significant analysis needed to be done, and it takes time to gather that, that, that information and assess the data. As we look at future meetings, I for one would like to, to work backwards from approximately March 31st. I think it's reasonable, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's reasonable to assume that this body could develop consensus on the future of the Mill Pond Dam by the end of first quarter 2026. So I'm wondering, and again, if you need to report back at a subsequent meeting, that would be perfectly fine, Mr. Swallow, but I'm wondering if, if those tentative town halls and public meetings scheduled for March the 9th and the winter of 2026 could possibly move to the late winter of 2025 in either February or January of, of 2026? Again, I think that a lot of analysis has been done, and it took time to gather that information and to assess it, but I'd like to, at a certain point, we gotta make a decision. And I think we're, we're getting close to a decision, we're not there yet, there is some additional information that needs to be gathered, but I'd like to work backwards from, from March 31st and, and see if we can aim for, again, by the end of the first quarter of next year, making a decision on, on this issue. And of course, if, big if, but if the consensus is to move in the direction of a, of a public vote, we will need time to gather the appropriate information and then schedule that on the, on, on an appropriate ballot where hopefully a large, broad swath of the electorate is participating. You're welcome to comment on, on any of those issues, or if you'd like to report back, again, that would be fine.
No, I think certainly end of the first quarter is reasonable, and that's what we were looking at also with March 9th, presenting to, in a public town hall forum, kind of the where, what the, the consensus, at least from a staff and from an engineering standpoint, was as to what the recommendation would be to council, but also obtain that final feedback from the public at that point. So I think that timeline still matches what, what, what you proposed, but we can look at that workshop, potentially moving that up a little bit, I think, to make sure that we have, that the public is getting the information they need to provide feedback then to...
Very good. Mr. Swallow, then, for the public's edification, of course, city council has not established or scheduled their meeting dates yet for 2026, but following our normal schedule, meeting on the first and third Monday, in the event that there's not a holiday. In March, we would meet then on the first and then on the 16th. So if we had a, a public forum on the, the 9th, you would wanna turn around and have a recommendation and a possible vote by council then on the 16th, that's correct?
That's based on the current timeline, yes.
Okay.
So if we feel that there's more time needed, we can look at moving those dates up.
Okay, very good. Certainly.
So, speaking of, if, if we as a body decided to put this on the ballot, city clerk royal, that information, the deadlines for that usually come out right at the beginning of the, the calendar year, when we would have to have that. Do you, offhand typically, if we were looking at a November 2026 ballot initiative, what month, offhand, do you know?
It's roughly around the primary, isn't it?
Like April-ish?
No, later, August.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've done this with our charter amendments, there are some, so usually by the end of May that needs to go, we need to have information to the county, so it could be on the August. It seems like it's way in advance, but that's part of the printing the ballots and whatnot.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
When I get that information, I will forward it on to city manager Swallow, and then he can communicate it to city council.
I think roughly the standard is about 90 days.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, you know, as we go through this process, we keep that deadline in mind as well, should we decide to do that.
Okay. Thank you both, we appreciate it, and we look forward to revisiting this issue again. And again, thanks to the members of the public who, who offered insight either this evening during public comment or, or previously at, at council meetings, town halls, or, or via our community survey. And again, if you'd like to address the dam issue, we'll have the opportunity again at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. We're gonna proceed to the consent agenda, the following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Mayor, I would like to remove 25-118 fiscal year 2026 blanket purchase order.
Okay, so that will become then the first item under new business. Councilmember Rice, would you make a motion then to approve the consent agenda as amended, striking 25-118?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Initiate.
Seconded by Seo, hearing no objection, all those in favor approving the consent agenda as amended, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. I see that the motion carries unanimously. We come to the first new business item, which was the item removed from the consent portion of our agenda, which is 25-118 fiscal year 2026 blanket purchase order to Wost Chemicals Incorporated. This will be a motion to approve the blank purchase order.
Move to approve.
Move by Girba to approve, is there a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by Seo. Mayor Protem Dillon, you had a question or comment?
Yes, thank you. It's... It's, we're using a phrase, blanket purchase order, and it's not something that's normally in our vernacular, and so just sort of, we usually have an up-to amount, or not to exceed, or something like that. It's my understanding that what we anticipate there to be an increase in the chemicals required, which will be beyond the threshold of the city manager's approval, and so this is just to make sure that things keep going. I guess I'd like to sort of understand, when we say economic impact of 285, is that what we anticipate, and is what was budgeted in there?
Are you able to comment on that, Mr. Swallow?
You might have the budget right in front of me, I will get back with you as soon as I can on that, but yes, it is up to that amount in total chemicals that we're looking at potentially. And I believe that, starting in brief conversations with Treasure Finch, that was, is within the budget, but obviously above the individual threshold for me to approve.
Okay, and is it for something, I guess I'm just a little concerned that, like I said, blanket purchase order, it seems like it could imply that they can buy other things, is it something very specific? I mean, I just wish we had better parameters around it, where it, the motion dealt with a specific thing that was being purchased.
Is there a specific terminology that you would prefer in future motions?
I would, like I said, in the past, we've always done a not to exceed, and then we can always come back.
Well, then unless the city manager deems it as problematic, why don't we just proceed in the future with verbiage that says a not to exceed amount? Can that be done?
Yes.
Okay, consider it done. Additional questions or concerns, Mayor Protem Dillon?
No, that was it.
Okay, additional comments or questions on the motion, Mr. Girbaum?
Just clarification, I've been used to this type of language, using blanket orders in the past, is this a change from what we've done in the past that you're aware of, or any?
That I'm aware of, that obviously prior to, for this particular vendor, we did not require it, because obviously we were under that $25,000 threshold in individual purchases. So this is, that's the change, is that because of increasing costs, so there's been no other change in terms of purchasing policy from this vendor or overall.
Generally, when you do this, it's kind of trying to negotiate the price anyway, so when you do the blanket purchase order, it should be set for that year, but is this kind of anticipating this idea that we are going to be paying a lot more for chemicals?
These are recurring expenses at the wastewater plant, alum in particular has gone up significantly, and so that was the chemical specifically a concern that was driving up those costs.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Councilmember Rice?
Did you, by chance, just have any, like, example, like an example of, so typically this bill would be 19,000, but this year it's 29,000, did you and Bill, the superintendent, discuss any of that? I'm just curious, it doesn't hold my back.
I don't have a specific examples, so obviously the, you know, mindful of the purchasing policy and not exceeding the 25,000, we didn't want to have to come back each time, purchasing chemicals for the wastewater plant, and the concern obviously that would be delay in process or delay in delivery of the chemicals for that.
Perhaps in your weekly update, if you could just kind of give us a little bit of an example of like what we might be looking at, just so that as council, you know, we can have these discussions with the community, like, hey, this cost has gone up this much, and that's why we were looking at these types of things. It's more for the community and for our benefit, just so that we have sort of those talking points, that we understand exactly what we're looking at as we go throughout the year.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any additional questions or concerns? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? It's been promptly moved by Girbaum, seconded by CO to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 25-162, fire governance city of Celine. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt and to adopt or not to adopt resolution number 25-162, affirming the recommendation of the Celine Fire Board appointees to formally, informally joining with Celine, Lodi, York Townships in the intent to develop a fire authority. Further, this action acknowledges the matrix evaluation process and directs the city manager and fire board appointees to collaborate with township partners on the formation of an authority, drafting articles of incorporation, negotiating governance structure, and returning with formal documents for council to review and approve.
Move to acknowledge?
I'm going to go with CO on this one, I think. CO, what was your motion?
I was going to move to acknowledge and adopt the resolution.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. City manager Swallow, would you like to begin, and then I know that deputy city manager Cole, particularly in her role as acting city manager, put a lot of time and effort into this, so maybe you can begin, then I will defer to her.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The city of Celine, together with our neighbors in Celine, Lodi, and York Townships, have come to an important point in deciding the future of the Celine area fire department. For several years, partners have expressed a desire to work on improved structure for the department, with the goals of finding ways to improve efficiency and long-term sustainability. Tonight, we're asking city council to authorize the next step in forming a fire authority. Three weeks ago, we came before council with the results of analysis, several options regarding how to structure the governance, and how does the operational guidance for the department. As part of that analysis, four options were considered and evaluated, containing the status quo, contracting out for fire services, strengthening the regional partnerships, and forming a fire authority. This analysis is based on the results of a comprehensive study by the Center for Public Safety Management, and reviewed by numerous factors, including fiscal sustainability, response times, equity and cost sharing, ease of transition, and governance clarity. Results of this analysis concluded that the fire authority was the best option for the city's Celine and its partners going forward. Included in your packets this evening are explanations of that analysis, and a recommendation from the review committee to proceed with exploring the fire authority model. While Councilor Lesch and Fire Board Authority member Champion are not able to be with us this evening, they also provided statements in support of their recommendations for pursuing the fire authority, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Councilor Lesch, member Champion, as well as deputy city manager Cole, for all their work and the significant time they spent completing that review and crafting this very detailed recommendation. Before you this evening, again, as a resolution for your consideration, that the city of Celine hereby expresses its intent to join with our partners in the Celine area fire department, and in pursuing the formation of that fire authority. Additionally, the resolution authorizes city manager and appointed Celine Fire Board members to participate in all planning sessions, negotiations, legal reviews, and community engagement efforts necessary to evaluate and draft an articles of incorporation, which would be the founding documents for that authority. However, I think it is important to note that this resolution does not create the fire authority tonight, does not bind the city at this time to any specific terms, enabling documents specifically, again, those articles of incorporation will need to come back to the city council for their review and approval before the authority can be formed. I also anticipate providing periodic updates to council, and seeking input from the community as those articles are drafted. So with that, I can take any questions, I know, again, thank you to deputy city manager Cole, doing a lot of work and putting into this, as well as Councilor Lesch and board member Champion.
Thank you. Deputy city manager Cole, is there anything you'd like to add for the record this evening?
No, no, I just wanted to do a perfect job.
Okay, why don't you hang tight in the event that there are questions that are best addressed by you, because again, the oversight of the external third party who conducted an evaluation of fire services in the Celine community was completed, and most of the research was done during your tenure as acting city manager. Subsequent to that, very thorough and detailed report being received, council designated you, member Champion, and council member Lesch to do some additional evaluation, including a matrix and scorecard, and then there was a subsequent recommendation. I would also note for the public record that this, these items and issues were discussed, both directly and indirectly, at the most recent fire board meeting, of which I attended along with Mayor Protem Dillon, council member Harmon, and city manager Swallow. So with that, we'll open it up for questions and comments. Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you, I just wanted to sort of make a statement about this. Having been on the fire board for about 10 years, when we start talking about the fire authority, this is not something new. We have actually, as the fire board, has been talking about this for several years. Unfortunately, it was not an option for the city of Celine, or, excuse me, for the fire department, because one of the municipalities that is served within the fire department is only a partial municipality, it's a partial participant. And so the authority as written did not apply to us. We went through three rounds of legislative back and forth before that was actually been able to be changed to accommodate for a partial community. So I just want to make sure that the public understands that the city has not been holding up this process, the process has been holding up the process. And it is something that we need to look at very carefully. I will support this resolution, I will not say though, until we have the articles of incorporation, and that we know that they're in the best interest of the city, that I would support it. Right now, it is very preliminary, and trying to figure out how to go from an informal structure to a much more formal structure within four municipalities is going to take some time. And there's definitely some things that need to be included for the city, clearly being able to release the city of liabilities, and it would become a part of the fire authority at that point, is going to be a key aspect. I want to just be clear that I think there's been a lot of pushback that the city has held up this process, and I want to be fair in saying that we haven't. The idea of doing this study was brought before the fire board years ago, the fire board chose not to pursue it, so the city, even with the city offering to pay for it. So the city did this study on its own, this did not come out of the blue. So again, just sort of clarifying that we want to be on the same page about this.
No, I very much appreciate those comments, and much like Mayor Protem Dillon, I served on the fire board in a variety of capacities over the years, as both a council member and mayor, and shared the fire board for approximately 10 years. And my colleague is indeed correct, we first mentioned the need for an independent review and analysis, I believe, back in 2022. My colleague is also correct that the main issue that held up this process was the fact that it required a legislative fix, to which myself and the chief testified before both the House and Senate, and because of the determination and tenacity of our former state representative, Felicia Brabeck, who sponsored the legislation, it was approved by the House and Senate, and then signed into law by the governor last year. So we're now at a point where we can move forward. I echo the comments and sentiments that were just expressed by Mayor Protem Dillon. I think this is advantageous, I think it's potentially good for the department and for the city to move in the direction of the establishment of an authority. I look forward to careful and thorough review of subsequent documents and motions, and I do have great faith and confidence in the city manager, and in councilmember Lesch, and Ms. Champion, who will be our advocates and representatives on the fire board as they begin in earnest these negotiations and conversations. So when the vote is called, I will be voting in favor of the motion to both acknowledge and to adopt. There are additional questions or comments, councilmember Rice, and then Mr. Girbaum, councilmember Girbaum.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think that as a, not only a community member, but a council member, this is probably the most important thing that's come in front of me in the 10 years since I've lived in the city of Celine, nothing is more important than the safety and wellness of our community. I am so glad that we got to a point where we can vote on this, and we can move forward with the fire authority. It removes the politics from safety and wellness of the community, it gives more opportunity for funding, for potential expansion, just increases all-around benefits for increased safety, increased services. I do agree that this is going to be a long process, I anticipate there will be bumps in the road over the next year, but I think sort of starting over again, and this isn't really even starting over again, as Mayor Protem Dillon mentioned, they've been working on this for years, it was just never a possibility until recent times. So I think, you know, getting off on the right foot, having everybody on board with this, and really creating a system that's going to work for the entire Celine area, where everybody receives the same benefits of safety, all of the concerns that the community, I think, has brought in the past, will be able to be resolved through this authority. There's just so many more opportunities, and I'm just really excited that we are at this point, and I get to vote in the affirmative during my tenure, I'm very proud of this, I'm very proud of the study.
Thank you. Councilmember Girbaum?
When we've looked at this, and my biggest concern has always been, and I think the public knows it, is to make sure that we have a structure of which we can rely upon accountability, oversight, and looking at a structure in which there's that type of a review and thing that's happening. With the articles of incorporation, by going this process, I think we'll have a better way of, not only are they accountable to the citizens, but accountable to the state, and presenting a type of organization that is run at a level of what it needs to be. While, over the last 10 years, a number of these things could have been incorporated and done, and put in place, at this point in time, I think this is the way that we're going to have to move forward. We have a matrix, some things can be subjective on that, and some things can be objective. While we look at this, we know that regionalization is the only answer as we move forward, this is the only way we're going to pay for this to make it affordable. I think, for me, the concerns that as we move this forward, and we will have these back and forth, and especially in town halls and such, is to make sure that we have commitments from each organization for a period of time, not that it's five years in the future, and then somebody splits to go somewhere. We're talking a significant commitment, similar to what we've done already for 50 years, but we also need to talk about what it's going to cost for people to buy out, move, add, whatever, so I think those things will all be put into the articles of incorporation. Above all, the idea is that whatever we do, in looking at the city, it's the safety and the protection of our individuals, our building, our property, is that it's going to be the priority of whatever we do moving forward. Regardless of what we did and looked at that study, that was the intent, nobody had evaluated something of this nature for 50 years, and I appreciate our council colleagues that have supported that, and we spent the money to do that. And moving forward, we're going to make sure that whatever arrangement comes out of this, I hope will work well, whether it's the same size it is now, if it's adjusted or whatever. I appreciate deputy Cole's work on this, I appreciate Lori Champion, who's worked a great deal in the last year to bring together all our partners and to work this into a situation in which we're moving forward now as a better body, and hopefully, when we look through what comes out of this, it'll be something that this community can use as a model for other entities within the state.
Thank you. Mr. CO, councilman CO.
Thank you, Governor, I just wanted to agree with all my colleagues' comments to this point. I'm glad that the legislature has finally, finally, finally enacted the enabling legislation that would allow all the present members of the Celine area fire department to move together under the informness, what would become the Celine area fire authority. I think the authority board is truly the best form of governance for public safety through the guise of a fire department, and I intend to support this.
Very good. Councilmember Harmon?
Yes, I would like to commend deputy city manager Cole for implementing my process or my concept for a scoring matrix, to be able to provide some transparency to decision-making, and, you know, the logic behind the decision, so, thank you.
Before we vote, Mr. Girbaum made a comment about city money being spent on the analysis, and I'm glad he brought that up, because indeed, we did spend public funds on this independent analysis, and I have to say, in total candor, I'm intensely proud of that decision, I think that was money very well spent, that provided us clear and unambiguous information and data, which subsequently led to the working group, subsequently led to the matrix, and got us from point A to where we are today. So again, I'm casting a very affirmative vote in favor of the motion before us, which again, has been moved by CO, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the last new business item tonight, which is 25-163, Celine Rec Center DHU replacement project change order. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from deputy, or from director, excuse me, Lambert, to approve or not to approve a change order in the amount of $53,865.60 to Boone and Dar for structural reinforcement of the roof necessary for the replacement of the natatorium dehumidification unit, DHU, and authorize, not authorize, city treasurer to amend light item 2000, 2000, 208-756-985-000.
Move to acknowledge?
To approve and authorize?
Seconded.
I'm going to go with Dillon on this one, because I think I heard her first, and I think her motion was just to acknowledge, is that correct, Mayor Protem Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, and Girbaum will be the second, we'll have a motion in just a moment to approve or not approve, or whatever the pleasure of council is. Mr. Swallow, would you like to begin, or am I deferring immediately to the Parks and Rec Director?
I can just do a brief introduction, obviously, this has been an ongoing project relative to the dehumidification unit at the rec center. Certainly, you know, as part of that, early on, realized that we needed a professional consultant, IMAG, to take a look at the installation, the specifications for the unit, and potentially structural modifications that may need to be made to the roof. So unfortunately, this got a little bit, you know, I guess secondary to the approval of the IMAG unit, or excuse me, of the DHU unit itself, because the lead time, order time for that, and so, but then council did authorize, of course, the coming back with the further structural analysis, and obviously it did result in required improvement, so I know Director Lambert has been gauging this from the very beginning in detail, and so. and so I'll let her run through more of the timeline and as well as how we got to this scope of work.
Thank you so much. So, yeah, I'll give a brief background and kind of bring you to where we are, and then talk about the scope of the project. So it's been almost a year ago that we engaged with the design engineering firm of IMEG for the replacement of the DHU unit, which was past its lifespan. I know you've heard me say this over and over again. And so at the time, when we, our initial meetings with IMEG, we talked about some previous studies that had shown that the current unit was undersized for the facility, for the Natorium, which had led to some roof failures many years ago. We had done additional work with the ventilation system going back some time ago. So when, essentially, when IMEG came back to us with their initial recommendations, you know, we had a very robust conversation, and we realized that they actually had sized it according to what our current Dectron is. So they had to go back and do another reassessment to make sure that, you know, that they, which they did go through. And they confirmed that indeed, the Dectron did not meet the required CFM for the Natorium. So it necessitated a larger unit to make sure that the airflow is moving at the specific rate that it needed to. Just to mention the weights, I know we've talked about this in previous meetings. This new Suresco unit, although it is a larger capacity, the weight is slightly less than the Dectron, but we, remember, we are adding an additional platform on the west side of the unit. Currently, the Dectron has a catwalk on the east side, which allows access, but when we have contractors or even our staff who needs to come check in on the unit, they're up on ladders, up on a rooftop with the wind, and it's, I've been up there several times. It's not a safe situation, and it's something that really necessitated adding a catwalk. So when you add the weight of that with the new unit, it's pretty much a wash. But what surprised us with IMEG, they, you know, they were concerned about the larger footprint and the load distribution. So that led to the request for original engineering for structural, and which took, you know, several months to complete. The findings resulted in the need for structural steel reinforcements, so specifically bar joists modifications required prior to the installation of the new DHU. So the bar joists will be reinforcing the existing double joists. So if you've been to the Aquatic Center, you'll see, if you look up at the roof, there's several double joists. There's these cross beams, but they're not tied in together. So what they want is those double joists tied in. And so, you know, these repairs are required before you can move forward with the replacement project. I want to mention that the, our new unit was originally spec'd to ship on October 31st. Probably about two weeks ago, we found out that it's shipping on the 15th, so it's next week, which rarely happens, right? Usually, we're expecting delays. This is actually coming ahead of time. So the scope of the work, what's taking place? They're going to provide install and paint the bar joists reinforcements and the roof structure. In order to do that, they're going to have to remove some of the fencing on the outside of the pool, the Natorium, where the pool deck is the outside patio, so that they can get the lift inside. They come in, those small double doors, I've been told that it will work. It seems a bit small. I'll invite you all out to come watch that. Then they have to install the visqueen all the way from the joist at the top down to the pool deck to protect the lap pool. We do not have to drain the lap pool, but this will protect and make sure that nothing gets into that pool during this project. The work they anticipate is going to be an additional two weeks above and beyond what we had originally expected for the removal of the Dectron and replacement, which that was expected to be about two weeks. And then, I already spoke about the shipment date getting moved up. In the meantime, our staff ideally start next week, they're going to start removing the diving board, because we need room to work. Again, if you've been to the Saline Rec Center, to the Aquatic Center, this work is going to be taking place toward the deep end of the pool, so where the diving board is located. So it's all of the roof above, which is where that new Suresco is going to be sitting on We're hoping to use our time wisely. So we are anticipating a shutdown of the Aquatic Center starting October 20th. While the structural reinforcement is taking place, our contractor, Boone and Dar, will actually be able to start demoing the current unit. So we're going to have some overlap work, which is ideal, to make sure things are moving along at a good speed. They're going to, there's some electric pole that they need to work on during that time to get that prepared, and then there's some control systems. We're relocating our control panels from our mechanical room, which is on the second floor, down to our pool office, which is more, it's more temperature controlled, so we want to make sure these components last a long time. It's not, it won't be in as corrosive an environment as it is up in the mechanical room. So if all goes well, you know, we can see the new unit lift onto the roof potentially by the very end of this month, if things go smooth. Of course, weather factors or other contingencies could, you know, get in our way with that. But then we hope to have final connections, testing, system balancing, and ideally have swimmers back in the pool come mid-November. So we are going to, just to be safe, we're going to, you know, communicate about a five-week shutdown. I certainly hope it'll be less than that.
Very good. Mr. Swallow, anything else you'd like to add?
No, this is mine.
Questions from council regarding the memorandum? Mr. CEO, if you'd like to begin, you're the firsthand I saw.
Yeah, just want to make the comment that, you know, we did hear the comments during the public address about why should we move forward with this? I think the reason why is that this is necessary to put in place the unit we've already ordered and have already allocated the money for. So in order for the pool to continue to operate, we need to have this DHU in place, this dehumidification unit. And in order to get the DHU there, we need to have these structural enhancements made to the building. So that's why we're spending the money at this time to go ahead with this.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dillon is the mover of the motion to acknowledge receipt. Did you have some questions for the Parks and Rec Director or City Manager?
Thank you, yes. What I wanted to ask is, I've got kind of a few of them. Is there any concern with having people in the building while there's work being done in the building on the roof?
Yeah, so we just had a discussion with our general contractor late last week about that. So we've asked this question, and we keep reapproaching that question. They don't anticipate having to shut down the entire Rec Center, however. I'm not going to rule that out. The concern date would be the date of the lift, okay? So when that gets lifted onto the roof, we might have to have a temporary shutdown. That's what I would anticipate, and we'll keep in conversation with the general contractor about that. However, the entire Aquatic Center will be shut down starting October 20th, because obviously, no work can be done when we've got the structural team in. And as a demo, the Dectron, we don't have that air quality unit, you know, keeping the air safe, keeping the humidity out, so on and so forth, yes.
So that'll lead me right into my next question. So what will happen without dehumidification for a month?
So in anticipation of air quality in the facility, we're going to be dropping the pool temperatures down during that time, not only to just save in temperature, but also save in evaporation. And, you know, unfortunately, it is what it is. You can't do this project without shutting the system down, so that's why they're going to try to do as swiftly as possible. And they're going to overlap some of that work so that we can get that new unit on and get it hooked up. There's going to take time to balance it, but as long as they can get blowers going and get some air circulation in there, you know, then we'll be, we'll be good. But this is part of that project.
Okay. And have we gotten any assurances that we're not going to have mold issues, condensation issues, or anything like that? I know we're talking about lowering the temperature. We've done this before, and yet we still have problems. So I just want to understand, what are we doing to be proactive with that?
Yeah, I think weather is a good factor for us as we're heading into some cooler temperatures. I know today feels like the last day of summer, and so that's going to really work in our favor. You know, part of, part of the push for this was, you know, it was a 20 to 22-week lead time to get this new unit. So, you know, we were trying to make sure that we were moving at a good pace, because we knew that what happened this past February, there was no way this unit was going to make it through this next winter. We don't want to be doing this job in the dead of winter when it's super cold, and then we have those opposite effects where we're not heating the air, and then we're concerned about some of the mechanicals, and maybe we had to bring in additional heating units. So actually, with the cooler temperatures, that should work in our favor.
Okay. And then, just a couple financial questions. One is, do you have an estimate as to what it's going to cost not having the pool open? Like what your loss in revenue is going to be for that month?
Yes, off the top of my head, I have to remember what it was. I think we had chatted about $50,000 or $60,000 a month is typically what we lose. We are, some of our messaging going after our members is to encourage them to try other activities in the Rec Center, take a class, maybe challenge somebody in a game of racquetball, go into the gymnasium, you know, use some of our fitness equipment during the time that it shut down. So we are going to be encouraging that. One thing that we're not going to be doing is offering refunds on membership, because instead, we're going to offer our customers the opportunity to just freeze their membership. And what that'll do is just extend it by the dates that we're shut down.
Okay. And then my last question is, when I kind of look at the budget line item that we talked about, that long number, starts with a 208, when I looked at the budget, that's actually a zero line. So are you transferring in $53,865 to that account? And if so, where is that money coming from?
That's part of the reason why that this is requesting budget to amend that line item to increase, and at this point, obviously, it becomes a fund balance at this point.
Yeah, that's a big issue for me right now, because the Rec Center's got to start footing the bill on some of this. I mean, we keep dipping into fund balance, and it's, it's not sustainable. And I really am struggling with this. Obviously, we need the part in order to do this. We need to do this work. But I am absolutely adamant that the Rec Center has to find the $53,000 to do this, because you keep asking the city to take the burden of it, and not just the city, now we're working at fund balance dollars, and that money, that account just keeps going down and down and down, subsidizing the Rec Center, and it's just not sustainable. So I would like to see, and I would hope that my colleagues would agree at some point, that there has to be a line item from the Rec Center's budget to support this.
Additional questions regarding the memorandum? I think Ms. Councilmember Rice's hand is up first, then I'll jump to Mr. Gear, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Again, I'm looking for just questions at this point. We'll have, if there's a subsequent motion to approve or to not to approve, we can have debate on that.
Yeah, that's fine. So we have not spent any of the money that we approved last month as our contingency to get us through until the Dectron to the new unit was incorrect. So we had approved, well, at this point, no, no, because it's coming in two weeks.
We're two weeks away from a shutdown at this point. So no, we would not be, we would not be putting in additional dollars.
So we had approved, I think it was like originally about $40,000, and then it was like decreasing throughout time. So, you know, we had already gotten to the point where we knew there may need to be some new things. This is different than that. This is something that's being added on to this unit. But council, you know, we've already said multiple times that we know that this task force recommendation is coming up, but we also simultaneously know that this is the one thing at the Rec Center we can't let die, or we walk away from the Rec Center for good. So I just want to point that out to the community, that yes, this is, you know, we have another bill that's being added on to this, but we're still talking about the same thing, the same one item at the Rec Center that absolutely has to be improved, no matter what our Rec Center task force outcome is. That's the thing. We can't, we can't sell that building without it. We can't partner that building without it. We can't do anything without this piece of equipment working. So I just wanted to reiterate that to everyone.
Additional questions? Councilmember Gearbaugh, then Councilmember Harman.
For me, and I've been consistent on this thing, we still haven't seen a contingency plan. Where's the contingency plan? Now all of a sudden, we're going to be losing $50,000. That's going to be either shifting another subsidy to next fiscal year, because now we're losing $50,000, because we're going to allow an extension of memberships. I have challenge, and I ask a challenge. Figure out where you're going to save this. Either you need to put people on furlough for the period of time, for a month, so that those savings come through. I don't know why we would need everybody there if the building's shut down in terms of the swim team and all of that. If we need to, let's look at all the other departments. The realization is, this department's, this is going to need more money coming from somewhere. And I agree with my colleague that fund balance is there, but we keep seeming to go towards that and not solving the problem that is the Rec Center. It needs more money, and more money keeps coming from some situation. And I mean, we may have a resolution coming or something coming from the task force, but already, that price tag is not going to be attainable by this city. And I continue to look at this, and I'm not seeing where we're fixing a plug or fixing a hole. If we're going to put $50,000 or $100,000 towards the Rec Center, then why are we not saying, well, we're not going to do this in the engineering department, or we're not going to do this in the building department? Somewhere, we're going to do offsets, because that's the reality of how you operate. And it's getting worse and worse. When I look at this, I have not seen that information. I have asked for that information. I have requested that for years. I've asked for it just the last time when this came up. And as to the point where it's saying, oh, if we don't fix this, we can't get rid of the building, well, I'm not sure we're going to be able to put all the other money in there. We still have no idea what other additional contingencies could happen as a result of this installation. So when I look at this, if you want to put money towards this, that's fine, but it's coming out of current operations. It's not coming out of fund balance.
Additional questions? Councilmember Harman, did you have a question?
I just do have a comment. I know that there is, for Thanksgiving, there's like a shutdown, and there's daycare that's needed. I just want to make sure that that is going to be not impacted, right? Because there's a lot of parents that are not, you know, they depend on that for their work.
Yeah, correct. That doesn't impact any of our other programs taking place throughout the facility. In fact, we were strategic, even with some of our annual special events, we made sure that we planned those accordingly. The only other activity or program that is impacted would be swim birthday parties, but we're actively trying to encourage people to do some of our other birthday party packages. And then in addition, our aquatic manager, Sarah Zetlow, she, she has some meetings, some follow-up meetings tomorrow with some other pool operators, just to see if there's any opportunity to, and these are discussions that have been ongoing, to relocate, you know, potentially some of our programs into other spaces. We've kind of hit some walls along the way. Mary Lou Murray is shut down, because they're going through similar repairs right now. They're replacing their dehumidification unit and their glass block wall, and for them, that's almost a year-long project. So we're really grateful that, you know, this is going to, you know, only last us approximately a month. So we are looking to some of those, you know, alternatives. In addition, there is some cost savings in terms of, we won't be paying lifeguards. We're not going to be paying swim instructors unless, you know, there's an opportunity to get some time into some other pools, but we will have some programs, you know, pausing. So some of those expenditures will be paused as well. And we even talked about, you know, there's opportunities to decrease our chemicals during that time. We're not doing chemical samplings. We don't have to. We're not required by the state to do that. So, you know, we're kind of going to tone everything down.
The Rec Center is, it just seems like it's like a nickel-dying situation with regards to the Dectron and additional cost. I know, I'm really not clear on why the structural reinforcement was not part of the original quote. It would, it should have been anticipated, I think. Are there any other unforeseen costs with regards to the Dectron installation?
Not that I've been made aware of as of this point. And honestly, to address your question about, you know, why wasn't this done at the beginning? We actually had a discussion. That was the same question that we had. Why, why doesn't that get addressed at the beginning? Well, part of the reason is, they had to go through all of the research and all of the assessments to determine what they were going to put on the roof. You know, what is the load balance? What is the weight? What is the size? You know, what's the footprint look like? So to do that analysis, not knowing what we're putting on to the roof, that wouldn't have been, that's not the ideal sequencing of a project like that. So they really needed to know what was going on the roof before, you know, they were able to come back and say, we needed that engineering.
All right, we have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from Deputy, or from Deputy, my apologies, Director Lambert. I'm reverting back to old vernacular. You were great as deputy, but we're very happy to have you as director. Is there, there's a motion moved by Dillon, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Moved by CEO to approve and authorize. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Rice. Let me make a comment here per some of the remarks that were shared by my colleagues. Let me make a comment here per some of the remarks that were shared by my colleagues. I think it is indeed accurate that we need to move forward and approve this expenditure to accommodate the installation of the new D H U unit, which should be arriving eminently, based on the public statement that was made by Director Lambert. I do think, this is a comment more for the city manager, I do think, City Manager Swallow, there is merit to the concerns articulated by Mayor Protam Dillon and Councilmember Gearbaugh about utilizing fund balance dollars. So, what I would ask, if it's not too onerous, is in the next two weeks, if you could take the charge and do kind of a deeper dive and see if there are opportunities for cost savings or to generate some of that revenue via the rec center budget, and present an itemized list at our subsequent council meeting, which will be, I believe, on the twentieth. That seems reasonable to me. Okay. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Councilmember Rice, before you vote.
I agree. I think when, as we get into budgeting, I feel like we failed in this, in the most recent budget cycle, where we did not take a deep enough look at knowing that some of these potential expenses were coming up, and take a deep enough look at, you know, what we were truly going to sacrifice in order to make the rec center sustainable. I think as we go forward, even, you know, dependent on the recommendation of the rec center task force or not, we still need to be taking a look at our budget. We need to be reassessing and making sure that, you know, even though we budgeted for this much, let's reassess and make sure, you know, we are still on point with all of our programs, with all of our projects as we move into this, you know, unknown next year or so with how things are. I mean, we were already talking about, you know, chemicals being more expensive, you know, chemicals for the pool are going to be more expensive too, I'm sure. So, I think, you know, now that we have our new city manager in place and you're getting your footing, you know, having these conversations with staff and making sure that we're really doing to the best of our ability with the budget that we can. And to my colleague's point, you know, I understand, looking at, and, you know, it's a shell game. Let's just be honest, it's a shell game. What I won't sacrifice, though, or what I encourage us not to sacrifice is people. Let's do our best to scale back on projects, to scale back on activities, expenses, other things. But the word "furlough" literally makes my heart drop. So, the best that you can do to your abilities to come back to us and show us, you know, here's where we can find some cost savings, to the best of your abilities, not letting that affect people. That's it.
Real quick, before you vote, because I think everyone did an excellent job of making their point and perspective known. Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. I just would like clarification. So, based on your statement, Mayor, are you saying that at our next meeting, we're going to reevaluate if there's a funding source outside? So, you're asking for this to be approved utilizing fund balance dollars, and then come back and see if there's a different place that the money could be used from?
Well, first, I'm not the mover of the motion. So, the motion was made by CO and Rice.
No, I'm going off of the statement you made.
I know, but let me finish my point here before you interrupt. The motion was made by CO and Rice to approve with the verbiage that has been provided. I will support that motion. I think it's important to move forward since we already have this unit ordered and its arrival and installation is imminent. I do think there is merit to the concerns that were raised by you and Mr. Gearbaugh about trying to identify a funding source outside of our fund balance. So, I would charge the city manager with doing a deep dive over these next two weeks to see if we can recoup some of those dollars specifically from the rec center fund, from programs, initiatives at the rec center. That's my perspective. Hopefully, that clarifies your concern.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Rice, to approve and authorize. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Show of hands, who were the ayes on that one? Were you an aye?
No.
No, you were a no? I thought I heard you say aye. And then who are the nos?
No.
Okay, so the motion does not pass, so we will have to revisit the issue as unfinished business at our next regular council meeting on the twentieth. Councilmember CO.
I'd like to ask, what are we going to do with this dectron in the meantime? This new D H U, when it arrives next week?
Can I ask a clarification? So, if the fund, if it comes out of the fund balance, there is no other, so is the motion to have it come out of a different balance?
That's the intent of my request to the city manager, is to try to find an alternative funding source by reducing programs or recouping some cost at the rec center so we don't have to fund it, or don't have to fund the entirety of the request out of our fund balance.
If that's, if that's the motion and it's not coming out of the...
It's coming out.
It is coming out of the fund.
It's coming out as of now. I'm trying to identify, go offer an amended motion if that would...
So, I guess I'm going to let somebody else amend the motion. We can't just let the dectron unit sit, and I feel like we're being put in a rock and a hard place. So, I, if it's coming out of the fund balance...
I guess I'd like to rework my motion on Mr. Mayor, if I might.
You can offer a subsequent motion, the previous motion was not approved.
Right. I'd like to approve and authorize the expenditure of these funds primarily from the fund balance, with the exception that any offset that can be made by other economies achieved through the rec center, that that amount be reduced by whatever economies we can find in the rec center budget.
So, we might have to finesse that motion a little bit, Mr. CO, no disrespect. I would take issue with the word "primary." I think, obviously, at the moment, we're going to have to use fund balance dollars, but the goal would be to reduce that as much as possible by identifying additional cost savings or efficiencies within the rec center budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the essence of what I'm trying to say.
Oh, boy, I wasn't, I didn't have my pen and paper handy for that one. All right, so it's still a motion to approve and to authorize with the intent that we would try to recoup the fifty-three thousand dollars plus, or a portion therein, from the rec center budget, specifically through the reduction of programs, initiatives, or improved efficiencies.
Correct.
Does that seem appropriate to you, city manager, the wording of that motion?
Absolutely. We have it working out for us, and I think that direction is clear.
Okay. Clerk Royal, are you clear on the motion that's being offered, the amended motion that's being offered from the floor by Councilmember CO?
I've got my portion of it. Do you want to hear what I've got?
We should read it back for both the public's benefit and for city council, yes.
Not verbatim for what you...
Well, if it needs, if it needs to be finessed or modified, we will certainly do that.
So, I have to approve and authorize a change order in the amount of fifty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars with the intent to recoup a portion of or the total amount from the rec center budget.
Seems reasonable to me. Yeah, okay. You're going to move that motion, Mr. CO?
Sure.
Is there a second? Okay, is everybody clear on the modified motion? Okay? Go ahead.
Again, I'd like to reiterate, if we don't pass this motion, folks, what are we going to do with this unit when it comes next week? That's why I'm...
Is there any wiggle room with the dectron unit, the company that's selling us the dectron unit for all this amount of money? Is there any, are they willing to absorb any of this?
It's a custom-built unit, so it had a twenty to twenty-two week lead time, so it was custom-made for the space that it's servicing.
Okay, so there's no, there's no, they can't share in the cost of this?
Doubtful. Highly doubtful. Mayor Protam Dillon, before you vote.
Is there an opportunity to go sharpen your pencils tonight? Come back, have a special meeting? Find money? Because I just feel like this is very arbitrary. Well, maybe we can find something. There's no commitment, there's no guarantee, and then at the end of the day, it may just still all come out of fund balance. It's not holding the rec center accountable to the cost.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Obviously, council has the authority to amend the budget at any point in time. And so, obviously, if, you know, you're not satisfied with the cuts that we come back with based on our analysis, you have the authority just to choose line items at your discretion.
Okay. Councilmember Rice, before you vote, because I think we're, everybody's pretty clear on, that everyone's made their position pretty clear, which I appreciate.
I just want to reiterate Mr. CO's point. If we don't vote in the affirmative tonight, the, how much, how much did we spend on the dectron, or the replacement unit?
One million, sixty-two thousand.
We've broken contract with the one million, sixty-two thousand dollar piece of equipment that needs to be installed in the rec center.
Not just delaying installation.
We have an amended motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Rice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion carries four to two. Thank you very much. We move on to reports and other announcements. Again, I'm deferring to my left, and I'll end with Mayor Protam Dillon and myself. Councilmember Gearbaugh reports other announcements, updates from boards, committees, commissions, or task forces.
For this month, Planning Commission will not be meeting. There wasn't enough topics or development that needed attention at this point. I want to appreciate everyone that turned up for the harvest time out at the farm. We had approximately seventy-five to a hundred people. The weather was a bit warm, so people were not really in the harvest, I think, mood. So, it was still a good time. We had our typical hay wagon and pumpkins for kids to paint. So, I really appreciate everyone that participated and helped on that. And with that, I believe that's all I have right now.
Councilmember Rice?
So, Harvest Commission is working on quite a few things at the moment. So, we are meeting in a small group tomorrow to continue to work on some recommendations to council for improvements to the ROP structure at Mill Pond. And in addition to that, we are adding in a recommendation section on upgrading the dog park at Mill Pond. We held a meeting. Part of the park's master plan that was developed for the next five years was to do a feasibility study on whether or not we could put a dog park in Brecken Park. When all was said and done, after a town hall meeting, after looking at the space, kind of going round and round about it, we heard from the community, it's not the best space. And a lot of the comments were, let's just upgrade the other two dog parks. So, we're going to take a look at Mill Pond Dog Park, see if there's some improvements. We've heard a lot during that study as well about Mill Pond Dog Park and some things that could be changed there. And, you know, while we're looking at Mill Pond as a whole, it's best to kind of get ahead of this, get some recommendations down. We've done a lot of research. So, that group's going to be meeting, we're working on that document. And then we also awarded the Green Thumb Awards as well. Will we be presenting that during council?
Yes, we will. We just haven't decided on a date yet. So, I think next council meeting is pretty heavy, so I think we'll be looking at a November date for that, yes.
We had lots of, lots of fantastic nominations in a couple of different categories, and so we'll be presenting those in a couple weeks.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Harmout reports other announcements, updates from committees, commissions, or task forces.
Yes, the historic district meets this Thursday at 7:00 P.M.
Very good. Councilmember CO?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I just want to thank the public for its support of our Celine Lindenberg bratwurst sales at the recent Oktoberfest. We set a new record this year for the net receipts that we had, and it's the primary source of funds for the Celine Lindenberg group. We raise money to feed our German guests when they come here for their visit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember CO, Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. I, zoning board of appeals did not meet this month, urban county did not meet this month, cable commission meets tomorrow. And in the interest of time, I will do a full report out of the recent MML convention that I attended with Mr. Gearbaugh in Grand Rapids at a later time, because there was a lot of very informative breakout sessions.
Very good. The only update I have is in regards to the rec center task force, which was made mention of earlier this evening. Director Lambert can correct me if I'm wrong. The final meeting of the group will be a week from Tuesday, which is October the fourteenth, at 3:00 P.M. here at City Hall. I think the intent, or I know the intent of that meeting is to do a final once-over of the recommendation, the report. If there are council members who would like to attend that meeting, please communicate that through our Parks and Rec Director or our city manager, because there are three of us, three council members, myself, Mr. Gearbaugh, and Councilmember Rice, who are a member of that body. So, if a fourth attends, we will need to post it, but we're happy to do that. And it's my hope that on that occasion, they discharge and vote formally to recommend a variety of, excuse me, that they vote in the affirmative to recommend a variety of initiatives and solutions to improve the sustainability and usability of our rec center. And then that report, as you recall, is due to city council at our next regular meeting. And in talking to the city manager last week, and I think Mayor Protam Dillon was present when we reviewed the agenda, it'd be my suggestion that we deal with that as a work meeting as opposed to a presentation. That would be more conducive to a back and forth, more, more questions and comments from council members. So, one, I wanted to see if council members were available for a work meeting in two weeks' time, and then to inquire with the Parks and Rec Director and the city manager if they thought a 5:30 start time was more appropriate or six o'clock.
So, it'd be final report, I'd see if there's discussion by council, you know, a little bit more time.
Yeah.
Did you go 5:30?
5:30, safer.
Okay.
The memorandum report, that stuff will be available too, so we probably should review all that.
Okay, let's, all right, so we're aiming for 5:30 then on the twentieth. Councilmember Harmout, does that work for you?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yep.
Councilmember Gearbaugh? Mayor Protam Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember CO?
Yes, sir.
Very good, excellent. And then the other thing I would ask of the city managers, due to Councilmember Lush's absence, if an email could be sent to him by the end of the week, providing him the opportunity to debrief on any of these issues, specifically on the dam presentation, because that was very substantive. And if he had any questions, I want to make sure that they're entertained and addressed by staff. Appreciate that. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comments to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Please note, we do not engage in a back and forth during this public comment period. You'll have three minutes.
So, obviously, not back and forth, but I just want to, I want some clarification. It sounded as though the timeline that Director Lambert laid out was going, it sounded as though the unit was not going to go on to the roof when it was delivered anyway. So, I wanted to understand, clearly, it's going to end up in the parking lot or on the back of the truck if that timeline is correct.
Very good. Yep, we can make sure to address that with you right after the meeting. Thank you. There are additional citizen comments? And again, you're welcome to address any topic of your concern. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, David Rhodes. I wanted to comment on one of the slides in the presentation tonight, which indicated that between December ninth and I think January thirty-first, there were very few comments that came in about the dam, yes or no. That should not be, well, it's factual, it should not be an indication of what our community believes or wants to have done. It's more an indication that people within the community did not know, did not understand what was being presented. There's a very small group, two or three people informally, who have been talking to residents and have collected close to five hundred signatures already that support repairing the dam and keeping Mill Pond. So, I think if it were necessary, that group could be formalized and could probably come out with a couple thousand signatures very easily. And then, one other thing, I was wondering if anybody has approached M.D. about the potential conceptual use of transporting people under Michigan Avenue instead of water. I think M.D. might have some concerns, some issues, some comments about that. This is going to be another issue. And then, closer to here, in spite of the pretty pictures that were shown about reclaimed areas after dams were removed, you should go out to the city of Brooklyn and look at their dam, which is in process of being removed and has been in that process for several years, and is way over budget. And the drained area behind them is a mess. It does not look anything at all like it was shown tonight, so look at the real thing. Thanks.
Thanks, David.
And thank you all for your dedication to the city. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your citizen comment. Additional citizen comments?
Hi, Mary Wagner again. I just have a few questions. I just have a few questions. So, what I would like to know is, will the experts get, we get for the workshops, be averse in both keeping dams and removing the dams? Because I think there's benefit for keeping recreational asset or removing it for safety reasons. Will the city be seeking legal ownership of the tail race, because are we going to encounter any unforeseen legal expenses when we drain the water out of the tail race and water rights come up? They can do studies on what it would take to restore the park, at least a good estimate. You can look at nearby cities. Tecumseh is keeping their dam. The gorge dam that was mentioned earlier in Ohio, they did not. Dexter did not. In addition, I just wanted to mention that Dexter, they took many years to rehabilitate that area, so I don't think the mention of two seasons is accurate for the length of the time of what it would take to rehabilitate that park. And I just wanted to comment that we are downstream from farms, and the likelihood of pesticides getting into our water at some point is high. The one instance, the gorge dam, that's what they had in their sediment, and that's why they, I have so many issues removing it. So, even though we did testing, there could still be pockets pesticide in there we don't know of, and you can't reuse that sediment on the land next to it, so we'd have to ruin all of it, so just saying that we can reuse the sediment is not true. I just wanted to comment that I was listening to the rec center conversation, and I worry this is another can of worms, that we're not aware of all the expenditures that we could possibly encounter during this, and I just think that it's got the possibility of being a money pit, and that would go reflect on the taxpayers, and we're not, at this point, don't know all the answers, and in that study, there wasn't much reflection on, you know, the real costs in this current moment at this market, because the current study was done a few years ago, and that was a totally different market. So, we could be looking at different prices for the removal of the dam in the current market. So, I kind of would like to know, are we going to reassess for this year before there's any decisions made, just so we don't go, oh, well, it was eight million, but now it's 16? So, that's just what I'm interested in knowing. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional citizen comments? Again, you'll be limited to three minutes, but you can speak to any issues that are on your mind this evening.
Just refer to what Mr. Rose, what Mr. Rose talked about. On this slide presentation we've been showing to everybody, Slide 1 needs to be either modified or eliminated, because that really has to do with Rhodes and about the dam, but laypeople see that, they assume that's for the dam. It's a little bit of a show game, you might say, to confuse people. Also, on Slide 13, has to do with the poll that they took. The poll, was it 22 responded, and it was 13 to 22, 13 to keep the dam, 22 to remove the dam, 35 people in the poll. However, we have a poll taken by the Celine Post that same month, that same year, just a couple weeks after the city poll, and this was, this 448 people responded to this. 61 people, 63 people, 1% of the people said to keep the dam. That's like 236 people. So, just to sake of fairness, this presentation, these slides, you can modify or eliminate from the slides, the number of slides there. And also, this presentation, additional mechanical, I have a two-year degree in architecture. So, for 44 years, I did renderings for our company, architectural renderings. I can tell you their sales, all these sales. I look at these renderings, that's all I can do, I just can't believe them. They're not the scale, they're just, they're just not true. Not true, it's all that you got to get, because I know how renderings go. Just trying to be fair to folks.
Additional citizen comments?
Train Longway 225, North Lower Street, on the dam, and I'm not disputing what you were saying, Jeff, you said we can't kick the can down the road. I think it's unfair to say that council members are kicking the can down the road, because you guys are all laypeople, you don't all have files, you're not charged with tracking everything that's ever happened in this city. But that's at the meeting where Jeff Fordyce said, you know, we were supposed to, I forget the exact details, but we were supposed to inspect the dam, you know, every, so often, and he hadn't done it in years and years and years, and people's jaws just dropped. So, we did kick the can down the road, and I'm not saying, your predecessors, how many city managers ago, and this is just challenging government, when you have this many, nobody on city staff, well, I think Terry was here, but we change so often, and who's responsible for tracking the important things? The people we pay four or $5,000 a year? I think it's asking a little bit much of city council, so I think you guys should take yourselves off the hook on that. One thing that I want to talk about with regard to Mill Pond Park is I've heard three times in like four or five days now, some dispute about whether or not swimming is allowed at Mill Pond Park, and I have a picture that says, there's no swimming, wading, ice fishing, or ice skating at the park, so I just wanted to clear that up. As for the $80,000 study on the fire department and going with the thing that we all knew we were going to do anyway, yet you might not have known, but every rational person knew. And this is what he was studying when Donald Lysinski was state rep, I don't know how long ago that was, but he had meetings with Donald Lysinski about, and we can say we didn't know, but I think at some point, if we want to start saving money, as we come up against all these pressures to raise taxes, we got to start, hey, hey, let's just Google something, figure this out on our own, and stop spending $80,000 on a study. That's obvious to everybody. Stop spending $140,000 for cities, city employees to learn how to do S E O and whatever, you know, like, we are wasting so much money for no good reason, and I think if we just get a little bit conservative and tough on the spending, we can save some money and have more money to do some of these things that we really need to do. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any additional citizen comments?
I just wanted to make some clarifications, obviously, getting into the three-minute run-through on this, I try and get too much information out of it, and it's kind of hard to jog it around, but essentially, my comments on Eagle, where the, and Dean's remark kind of hit it on the head, is who's in charge? You've got all these entities. Eagle, to me, is at the top when you're talking about the dams, and, you know, and certainly the city's had a tussle with Eagle before, and it was very expensive for the city. So, I just want to say that, yes, the city has done a lot of work on the dam, but Eagle specifically said what they wanted done, and they, they said, Eagle understands the dam removal study is underway. In the meantime, please provide Eagle with corrective action plan to address the first recommendation above regarding the deterioration of the intermediate tiers, retaining walls, and trunnion pin anchor. So, that's what they're most concerned about, and it was supposed to be a corrective action plan in '23, and they didn't get it. They sent you this letter because you're not maintaining your infrastructure, and now it's going to be like 2026 before you get what they wanted in '23. So, my concern is, why does Eagle keep having to tell the city to maintain their own infrastructure? That's the real problem here. They shouldn't have to continually come back at you guys and say, you need to fix your own infrastructure. So, that's really what the situation with Eagle is. And one of the other things through the slideshow, was they were talking about a wide natural area along the river, if it was going through the Mill Pond. Well, that would be unmaintained, as was stated, so you're going to have really a wall of brush and trees on both sides of the river, all the way through the Mill Pond, and you're not going to be able to access the water, because they're leaving this low area for flooding. So, there's a lot of consideration in the design that I think needs to be, you know, delved into. And the other one was, who's on the dam task force? Because they want to adopt FEMA regulations, which are much higher than current Eagle, and it's going to be expensive for the city, so why, why did they recommend FEMA be adopted when it's a much higher degree than the state currently requires you to meet? So, who do I ask to get that question, that I'd like to find out? Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this evening? City Clerk Royal, any written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting, which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time? Let me just make a few comments, and this is just me, this is just Brian Marl speaking. We appreciate everybody who has provided feedback via a community survey or poll in regards to either keeping, preserving the existing Mill Pond dam or removing it. However, I would say that none of the polls that I've been provided are scientific. It's interesting data, but I'm hopeful that when we reconvene and have another town hall or forum on the subject, we can provide the community an additional poll before council makes a policy decision, and ensure that the people who are providing data are indeed residents and taxpayers of the city of Celine. As it relates to city finances and the independent fire analysis, people are entitled to their own opinion, you're not entitled to your own facts, and so, I would encourage people who have questions or concerns about the city finances to look at our fund balance, our fund balance policy, our elevated bond rating, and our annual audit. I think we do a pretty pragmatic and prudent job of carefully allocating public resources. And again, it's easy to make hyperbolic and flip comments when you're not up here at the dais, but when you're making a big, profound policy decision, like moving in the direction of a fire authority and considering other options, I think you want a plethora of data and information from external entities who can help you evaluate that. So, unless there's anything further to be brought before city council this evening, the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:37.
Salute.
Moved by Gerbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.